Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, could everybody stand and so lose the flag with me? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no, Mayor.
This thing bothered me a little bit. Okay, uh, council, can I have their approval of the agenda? Could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, could I have a second? Okay, the motion was made by Atkinson, seconded by Horn, roll call please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I vote aye. Motion carried, thank you. Okay, we'll go to awards, presentation, appointments, and proclamations. We have one. Proclamation, National Public Works Week, 2021. We have a proclamation here. It's proclamation by the mayor of the city of Kalinga, National Public Works Week. Whereas public works department provides services for our community in vital to an intricate part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of the community is vital to the efficient operation of public works system and programs such as water, sewer, streets, fleet maintenance, buildings maintenance, water treatment, solid waste collections, and airport operations. And whereas the health and safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas quality and effect effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon efforts and skills of our public works officials. And where the efficiency and effectiveness effectiveness of of the qualified and skillful staff contribute to the quality of life that residents and visitors alike enjoy and rely upon from the city of Kalinga. Now therefore, by the mayor and city council, we recognize and extend appreciation to our dedicated and skilled staff and hereby proclaim the week of May sixteenth through the twenty-second, 2021, as National Public Works Week, stronger together. And it further proclaimed that the city council requests that all citizens and civic organizations acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing public service, work services to our community and recognize the contributions which our public works employees make every day to our health and safety, comfort, and quality of life. In witness, therefore, I have set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Kalinga to be affixed this day, the sixth of May, 2021, signed by the mayor. And thank you for the, uh, the staff and the public works. And I think Sean, will, can you make sure that this gets to the public works?
Yep, I will make sure they get it.
Yeah, I'm having a problem getting through this, so that's giving me a problem. Thank you. In this section of the agenda, allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify theirselves, and use a microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for a follow-up and a report. I also have citizens' comments will be timed by the city clerk. She will alert you when you have ten seconds remaining. If you can continue speaking, you will be asked to end your public comment at the three-minute mark. As a reminder, citizens' comments can no longer be made via Zoom. All cities, all citizens' comments must be now made in person or submitted in writing to the city clerk no later than five o'clock on the day of the council meeting. Thank you. Shannon, do we have anybody that would like to address the council?
Mayor, we are only taking public comments from, um, in person or in writing, but I do have, um, one that I did receive in writing that I'd like to go ahead and read.
Okay.
I would like to comment on the agenda item regarding stricter penalties for irresponsible animal, animal owners. Ironically, the council member who has proposed this agenda item was found guilty and fined for the same. It obviously works well. Thank you, Greg Cody.
Okay.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience would like to say anything? Okay. Uh, public hearing, we have none. Consent calendar, approve the minutes, number one, approve the minutes for April fifteenth, 2021. Number two, check register for March first to March thirty-first. Number three, quarterly budget report for the first quarter, 2021, and ending March thirty-first, 2021. Number four, adopt resolution forty twenty-five, authorizing investments and monies in the local agency investment fund. Number five, authorize purchase of Swaz, uh, Model Nine Moon Soon Street Sweeper. Number six, authorize public works to purchase seven additional solar panel lights from Solar One for the wastewater treatment plant. Number seven, authorize replacement of sludge punch, sludge pump at the wastewater treatment plant. Number eight, authorize assistant city manager, manager to execute a task order with MKN engineering to prepare, to prepare a preliminary engineering report related to the rehabilitation of Derrick Reservoir. Number nine, direct staff to prepare an amendment to animals and foul section of the city of Kalinga Municipal Court and bring it back for council consideration. Number ten, consider and approve a bid award for Frame, uh, Park Splash Pad projects. Is there anybody would like to pull anything from the consent calendar? I would like to just pull one, uh, number ten. And I'd like Sean just to give us a, a brief over that, so everybody knows what that is, again, to remind everybody.
Yeah, the splash pad was, uh, kind of a recommended, uh, about a year and a half ago. We started design on this, on the splash pad, which are different elements on a kind of a big slab of concrete that shoots water from different, from different devices. Um, so there's multiple devices that have been identified on the plan. And so we started design probably over a year and a half ago. Started design, COVID hit, and knew we were not going to be having any activities going on outdoors, unfortunately, especially where we were congregating. And there were a lot of other projects that kind of, that item got pushed and deferred for a while for design. So we've recently finished design on that splash pad. And, uh, we went out to bid and received bids for award. Um, we're expecting probably about, this could be completed some, towards the end of July. So may have a month or so of use this year. Um, and that will give us a good indication of water use and billing for, you know, for the water itself in terms of those costs associated with that for the next season. So typically, you know, and we'll kind of get a better indication of how long the season of that splash pad will be open. I mean, we do have a, a wider range of warmer season here in, in, in Kalinga compared to some other areas of the state. So, um, and we'll be able to see the, the level of interest and use of that splash pad as well. Um, so there is, there's about probably ten or fifteen different elements to the splash pad, some larger elements, there's even a fire hydrant, so. But we've got some other vertical elements, and we've got some elements that come straight up from the ground as well. And then we also have a wall or kind of a seat wall similar, it's actually identical to what's currently in Frame Park. That's part of that new area. That's going to be along the park, adjacent to the parking lot to have that division between where the pad's going to go and the division between the, um, parking lot back by the bank.
And you can also use that for seating, right?
Yeah, so it's, it's really there for seating, there's a, there's a splash zone, and then there's the dry zone. And then you've got the, that element along that back area. And, um, it has an actuator, so it's not running all the time, it's only activated. And then the, the city can establish how long that, that runs when activated. So it could be three minutes, it could be five minutes. Uh, and so those are kind of the, the elements to the overall splash pad.
If, if it's approved tonight, uh, when do you think it would actually start? I mean, not start, but be finished?
Well, based on, um, you know, starter construction could be mid, mid-June, because typically when you award a contract, usually about thirty days before there, when you have a, a notice to proceed, they typically have about thirty days to start. And then I think this is only taking about thirty to forty-five days for construction. Because the, the lead time on this is really the ordering of all of the elements. They're about forty days, about thirty days out. So once the contract's executed, we'll be able to, they'll immediately order those elements and start working on some of the prep work on the site itself. So then those elements are kind of almost bolt-on in some instances.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or for that? Kate?
Yeah, I got a question on it.
Okay.
Is this system set up to recycle the water?
It does not recycle the water, no.
Okay. And, and, uh, just probably stupid question, but who's covering the cost of all the water?
The city does pay for the water, just like we do in the parks.
Okay, is it at a discount, or is it same price as?
No, it's same price as everybody else. So it's the same thing like in our parks, our landscape median strips, we have, we, we pay for that water. So as we estimate more, they'll probably, now that we're awarded a bid, kind of having an indication of how long will we use it. It's very difficult to determine exactly how much water it's going to consume. We'll probably be amending the budget a little bit to include that, because, um, to ensure that we have at least some money built in the budget for the water cost, because that will be an increased cost from previous years. Uh, we're not watering the lawn, because the lawn will be gone, so there's some offsets from that, um, that we're typically using all year round. So, um, we're, we're still analyzing that to see what, what estimate we should use for that additional cost there.
What about this, uh, is there scheduled times of days?
Uh, we haven't established that yet. I'll, I'll probably defer to Marissa on kind of terms on how she wants to monitor that. Um, I think as we open, I mean, it really depends on the window, you know, whether it's, you know, open from ten to six or, you know, summer hours might be different because it's lighter, longer. Um, so I, I think we still have to establish those, we don't quite have that yet. But I know that, uh, Marissa and myself will probably start working on trying to determine those hours of operation. We'll need signage and rules and that kind of stuff that we have to get to. So during this construction phase, we'll start working on that, getting those together as well.
All right, what about, what about someone being there, uh, supervising?
It's pretty much unmonitored.
It's just a free-for-all?
Yeah, it's pretty much there, I mean, it's the actual, since you don't have the actual, you don't have something that's running all the time, that you just basically have a sensor that turns on and turns off, or turns off on its own. Um, it's pretty much self, self-sustaining.
Uh, well, it will be attached to a timer, so it's, it's off during certain times?
Yep, yeah, so you, there's a lot of customization, so you can have it, like the activator, you know, sell it, you know, it doesn't work after, say, eight o'clock, and it won't start working until, say, ten o'clock in the morning. So you can set these different timers on the program, so, and then you have the intervals. You can set the, the pressures for all of the devices, you can sequence the devices. So if you originally activate it, some things activate first, maybe the other ones don't activate until like the last minute. So then at least they're not all running at once every single time. So there's a lot of sequences, sequencing, and there's a lot of options that we have with being able to control it.
All right, what about cameras?
Um.
For nighttime or, or any damage?
I don't think we have any cameras out there, I'm not sure. I'm, I imagine we could talk to Cookies and, um, Have a Heart, because they've got cameras all around their buildings. There's probably cameras that actually look, and the PD has access to those cameras. So I may be able to talk with Darren and see if there, if we do have, we can utilize those camera angles to be able to actually see it. I imagine the bank has cameras, but I'm not, I don't think we have any cameras in the, in the, uh, in that park.
All right, that's it, thank you.
Problem.
Have we done any, any concern, just, there's, just been planning, right? Right now?
The, tonight would be the bid awards, the plans are complete.
Okay, and there hasn't been like, no construction on there, no like, you know, any piping, any?
The only thing that we've done is public works has installed the sewer line.
Oh, the sewer line for?
So, because the sewer line had to come from the alley, so we, as the, as staff, went in and tapped into the sewer and tied in the sewer line, so there's actually a tie-in now. So just to bring it to the properties, we had to acquire an easement, um, through the parking lot of the bank to get that sewer line to that site. So there's been like, you think one tree's been removed, and then there's been a sewer line tapped to the property. So when the contractor comes in, they'll be able to tie into that sewer. And there's also power available right there, too.
What was it, the, is this the only location that was available for a splash pad?
Well, that, that was at the recommendation of the city manager to put it at Frame Park. It's more of a kind of a central park where
Yeah.
putting it in like the neighborhood parks, kind of like we've discussed in the past about the neighborhood parks. And unless we're putting one at each park, I mean, it makes it really challenging. And the funding was used through, uh, park impact fees.
Oh, I see, I see.
So the funding is very limited. These things are, as you can see, just the, uh, the contract award bid is a hundred and forty-seven thousand, so the, um, I think we've got about a hundred and hundred ninety-six thousand total in the Parks Fund, but we've been doing some improvements to both, uh, Centennial and, uh, Sandalwood.
Right.
And so we've been doing some maintenance stuff, but also some new stuff that we have planned. And so that's where some of that additional maintenance money is coming in. Um, and then we've got some other improvements that we're going to have to do when Sunset's done. We've got that little triangle that's going to be built in instead of just a open piece of asphalt right there at Sunset and Jefferson and Birch.
Yeah.
That's all going to be a little bit more of a bigger open space there. And so we're going to do, we'll have to do some improvements to that as well, so it's not just native dirt.
Oh, okay, okay, sounds good, thank you.
Problem.
Any other questions? Kate, I'd like to have a motion, yes or no? For the consent calendar?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, there was a motion, uh, made by Atkinson, seconded by Horn, to approve the consent calendar. Roll call please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to item number six, ordinance, presentation, discussion, and potential action items. This, number one, this discussion and direction and potential action regarding an amendment to the city of Kalinga's cannabis tax structure for various license. Sean?
Thank you, uh, Mayor and Council, this was a future agenda item requested, uh, by Councilman Atkinson, uh, and I apologize it's taken so long to get this item. We happened to find this in our notes and didn't realize that he had requested this item. Um, so we're bringing this back tonight to, um, as a discussion item for Councilman Atkinson to, to, uh, proceed with, uh, his recommendations or any other changes he may be looking at for, um, the cannabis tax structure. And I did provide a little background, um, regarding the tax structure for the city of Kalinga related to cannabis operators. Um, I think I may have made an error, and I apologize, uh, that I think the retail is taxed at ten percent, not fifteen percent. Um, and then for cultivation, a nursery is taxed at two dollars per square foot of canopy. And then mature cultivation activity is taxed at seven dollars a square foot. And then all other taxes in the city are taxed at twenty-five dollars per square foot for the first ten, for the first three thousand square feet, and then ten dollars thereafter in the increments of a thousand. Um, so Councilman Atkinson, I'll kind of give you the floor if you'd like to, uh, start the discussion. I'm happy to answer any other questions if you guys have questions as well during that.
Right now, we're, what about outdoor grow?
So outdoor grows, we discussed before, we don't have an outdoor cultivation like, uh, taxation rate. Um, if, in, if, if that's the direction of the council, we can, we can look at that and analyze similar to when we updated the cultivation tax, the indoor cultivation. Because if we were, if you recall, the cultivation tax is taxed the same amount as all the other, and to, all the other activities, so the twenty-five dollars per square foot and the ten dollars per square foot. Um, so we did reduce that down from, to two, two dollars and seven dollars. We can do the same analysis on outdoor and look at what the outdoor going rate is. It's usually significantly less than what even the current tax rate is, because right now outdoor cultivation's taxed at seven dollars per square foot of canopy. So if they grow on four acres, they're not being charged for four acres, they're being charged based on the expected size of the mature plant. So there's rows, obviously, when you see just row crops, it's not typical where the, the entire ground is covered in plant material of any type of crop. So there's always channeling, you know, for the, for all of your equipment. So we've, they provide us a detailed exhibit of what the canopy consists of, and it's consistent with what they send to the state. So we've utilized that for determining the tax rate. Um, so the square foot tax per canopy works, it's just a matter of whether or not if we do institute an outdoor, then we can go ahead and do an analysis to look at what we should charge.
Yeah, so, uh, that's why I bring it up, we tax it at seven dollars, which is, uh, pretty much higher than most places will tax. And when we talk about the outdoor grow, that's usually worth about half of what you would get from an indoor grow. So we tax them at about the same, seven dollars a square foot, but yet they're making half the money on the outdoor grow as they are in the indoor grow. So they're not really making the profit that they need, um, to expand. We want all our businesses in Kalinga to succeed, and we want them to generate lots of revenue. We can lower taxes and also raise revenue. Um, a lot of us up here are, say we're conservative, well, why don't we show them that we're conservative by lowering taxes and watching that the revenue comes in more? We want to be more competitive than, uh, a lot of the other places are around here. We want the businesses that are going to come to the valley, we want them to come here. Uh, we want the revenue. And, uh, for instance, with, uh, outdoor grow, seven dollars a square foot, that's, that's a lot, when they can go over to Lake County and get it for a dollar a square foot. So, uh, we're falling behind here, and I think we need to kind of catch up to where we are, or where the state is everywhere else. Um, I'd like to see a, I guess you'd call it a regressive tax system, where, or progressive, I'm not sure which one. Where the first acre, we could say, hey, you know what, the first acre is seven dollars. Uh, the next two to three acres are whatever, three fifty, I'm just throwing numbers out there. And the next acres after, uh, three or four acres is a dollar. Something that, um, gives them incentive to not only grow, but to, um, anytime you're going to get a business that's going to grow, they're going to add jobs, they're going to bring more revenue to the city. It's just a win-win for everybody. And with a seven-dollar tax, it's just not competitive, they're finding it hard to be competitive in the market.
Well, when we started this, we, we said we were going to look at prices and everything, too, so that's what we're doing right now, and that's not a, a bad thing. Now, do you think we should, uh, go ahead and do a study on it and, uh, check it like that?
Yeah, I can, I can analyze, uh, what I did last time for the outdoor, for the indoor grows, when we did that and adjusted it, I used, um, the services of Canoreggs, because I can go through and look and do a search and basically look at all the tax structures, analyze how they charge it. Outdoor is probably a little bit easier to look at. Um, so we could, we could look at that and then kind of give an analysis similar to what we did for the indoor when we lowered the rates for indoor to kind of see what the going rate is. Um, but yeah, that's probably the easiest way, and then I can come back and we, even staff can provide some type of recommendation. If you're looking at a tiered structure, we could do that, or at least there's a set rate.
Or maybe both, we could, you could show us both, and if you do, wouldn't mind.
Yeah, we can provide, you know, at least options, you know, the highs and lows, and then kind of find out where's a happy medium. We're one of the few cities that are allowing outdoor grow in the city limits. Um, typically, it's a county operation. So these are sometimes the ones in the county or even larger scale operations. But I think that this still could work in terms of the outdoor. And then what we'll do is, as, as well, we will make sure that we provide you some analysis based on the prepared budget for this fiscal year, what impact that potentially could have. Because the numbers that we've estimated for revenue for, I mean, for the, for the, for the, uh, operation at Claremont is based on the current number, not based on any additional square footage that's going to be added, so, and which is, seems to be in the works, so there's additional that's going to come. So it'll offset probably some of the reduction, if in fact the tax is reduced. So we'll try to provide that information as well to the council, so you guys can see what the impact is directly to the overall revenues for the year.
You're going to look at both indoor and outdoor, right?
Well, I think, well, if you want to look at indoor, we can, I don't, I, I think that the indoor is still pretty competitive. I think we changed that about not even two years ago. Um, but if you want, we can look at the indoor and see if numbers have shifted, I don't know if they've shifted much.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
But we can look at the indoor as well, as if you, if you're looking at, if you want to look at that as well.
A tiered system as well for the indoor. Especially with next green wave, building a new building, we can still make more revenue than we are now, but we can still lower the taxes, so he can, uh, reinvest that money back in his company and his employees. He still has more to build out there, like, how many more lots does he have out there?
Well, Next Green Wave has, they probably have like four more lot, five more lots out there. There's, I have two applications right now for more cultivation.
If it's feasible for them, it's feasible for us.
All right, if they had more revenue to build more, they'd be building more already. So also, uh, our retail, which I'm not necessarily saying we should change, is ten percent, like you look at Lomond and Hanford, they're at five percent. So we're getting beat by everyone who's surrounding us right now. So, yeah. I'm not saying we should change retail, let's keep that as it is right now, unless anyone else has something different, but. So we good with that?
I think he's got that then.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll look at both indoor and outdoor rates, and, uh, we'll look at both tiered rates, tiered rates for both options.
Okay.
Okay. Any other things on this? Okay, we've got item number two, discuss, direct, discussion, direction, and potential action regarding the Enterprise Fleet Management Program. Kyle Perez and Anthony.
I didn't know if, Jasmine, did you want to provide a quick introduction before, uh, Kyle presents?
Yeah, I'm gonna, uh, yeah, uh, good evening, council and mayor. Um, the item before you is a, a presentation of a, of a program that staff has been working on. It's a, um, all-inclusive fleet management program that we came across. Um, it's by Enterprise, uh, we've all heard of, um, Enterprise, uh, rent-a-car. Um, it's, they're a fleet management program, and it's an all-inclusive fleet, fleet management program where, um, it's a program that has a fixed cost. And so, um, what it is, is it's a rotation of our vehicles based on use. And so, um, what we do is, we, it's a, it's a way for us to have a, um, a systematic approach to having, uh, vehicles that are operable that cost us the least amount when it comes to, um, maintenance costs. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Anthony and, um, Kyle. We've been working with Anthony and Kyle for several weeks now, just kind of fine-tuning this program. Uh, I came across this program through, um, another agency that I was working at, and it, it's a, a program that's been, um, pretty popular within, uh, the government sector here in the area and, uh, all throughout the country, I think, in the state. Um, but more and more agencies are going towards this, and it's, it's a way for us to have a fixed cost and a, a, a strategy for, um, fleet management and rotation to have, uh, operable vehicles, um, that don't, uh, that don't cost us too much to maintain. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Kyle and Anthony, and then at the end, we can answer questions and have a discussion.
Sure, I'll, um, I'll, I'll get it started off with a brief introduction, and then I'll kick it off to Kyle. Uh, Mayor and City Council, thank you all for having us here tonight. My name is Anthony Emlyn, I'm the area sales manager with Enterprise Fleet Management. My role and my responsibility is to oversee the sales team, so. My role and my responsibility is to oversee the sales team. So Kyle Perez and his peers who go out and seek new business opportunities. As well as our client strategy managers who are ongoing consult for our existing client base to make sure that we're being strategic with. Fleet replacement planning, industry updates, and also any sort of financial analyses that will help and assist in any budget-driven discussions. Um, I'm going to sit back and let Kyle run the show today. He's our account executive who's going to run through. The proposal for the council's fleet specifically, as well as what budget uh, dollars we would recommend allocating for a proactive fleet replacement plan. Um, so without any further ado, alternative to Kyle.
Thank you, thank you, Anthony. Mayor and uh, city council, thank you for having us. Uh, yeah, my name's Kyle Perez, account executive. Uh, with Enterprise Fleet Management. I am responsible for uh, seeking out new business opportunities and I'll go ahead and share my screen. Right now. Everybody see the? Yep, so um. So we work with uh, over a hundred and eighty government agencies. That includes uh, cities, counties, school districts. And, and, and so on. And for these current, I, here's some references and some for these current clients right now, we, we are taking care of everything from acquisition. Through the resale of the vehicle, including maintenance, fuel in a lot of cases. Um, with Enterprise Fleet Management, we are able to take care of everything from acquisition through the vehicle resale. Uh, what I want to highlight today is the financing and credit lines. Uh, we are able to replace more vehicles with the, a smaller budget. And that's, and that's really where we've been having a lot of discussions moving forward. So we're recommending the Public Works and Utilities Department. Uh, the total amount to budget is at forty six thousand five oh two. Uh, that's replacing nine vehicles and purchasing nine vehicles uh, with an annual cost of fifty two thousand two forty five. Uh, one-time aftermarket of ten thousand dollars. Uh, less the estimated equity from your current fleet of those nine vehicles of fifteen thousand seven forty three. Uh, leaving and at the end of the term, so fast forwarding five years. Um, leaving you with uh, equity in those nine vehicles at sixty eight thousand nine seventy that would go back to this. For uh, building inspector, the admin vehicle, this is just replacing one vehicle, purchasing one vehicle. Uh, total annual cost on that is five thousand three hundred and ninety-four. Um, there is no aftermarket on this specific vehicle. Estimated uh, equity from the selling that vehicle is two thousand five thirteen. So having a total amount to budget at two thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars for this. For the police department, we were looking at replacing three vehicles, uh, purchasing three. Um, total annual cost at twenty-three thousand sixty-three dollars, uh, with an aftermarket of forty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. With the equity in the current fleet at the moment of those three vehicles of fifteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. So. Uh, having a total amount to budget at fifty-one thousand two hundred and thirty dollars on this. For the fire department, we are replacing um, selling three vehicles and purchasing four vehicles. So adding an extra unit. Uh, total annual cost at thirty thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Total one-time aftermarket of fifty-six thousand. Um, estimated equity from the, the three vehicles being sold at twenty-seven thousand eight fifty. So the total amount to budget on this uh, for the fire department would be fifty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars. Uh, just direct your attention a little bit on the uh, operational savings. There's plenty of operational savings throughout. Uh, with this one, we are adding another vehicle and there is still savings on maintenance and fuel. So to sum it up, we're acquiring seventeen vehicles and selling sixteen uh, between the public works, police. Um, department and fire department as well as admin, uh, leaving you with a total budget of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand ninety-six dollars. Uh, and then after the five years, the expected equity at term is going to be a hundred and seventy-six thousand eight twenty uh, four. That would go back to the. Is there any questions on that?
Uh, which, which vehicles are you going to replace at the police department and fire department?
So there is, um, so the police department, there is one truck. It's a Chevy truck, um, as well as two. Uh, uh, one interceptor and one Durango. So, and purchasing two Durangos and one truck.
So is this part of what the chief asked for when he asked for new cars? Just the other day, last week?
No, this is completely different.
So that, so they're going to get eight new cars total?
Is Darren on? Darren, I don't think he's on. I believe so because um, the five that got uh, approved just recently were through um, a separate lease. And so that transaction is completely separate from this one. This is for the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. So what's being proposed here is for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget year.
Right, after July?
After July. And so what this is, is this is a, a, a vehicle rotation program. So. You know, we'll be rotating cars based on used, um, whether three or five years. Um, just to lower our, our maintenance costs and allow our um, public safety to have some um. More operable and more reliable vehicles on fleet.
Which, I'm just trying to figure out which cars are being replaced.
Okay, um, that exactly, I don't know that exactly. Um, Sean, is Eric on?
Were you referring to the police department?
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you, did he advise, let you know what vehicles they were, Greg?
Yeah, so they're staff vehicles. It's a uh, a Dodge Charger. A Ford Interceptor and a pickup truck to replace staff vehicles, not patrol vehicles. And then for myself as well, it's going to be staff vehicles. A Chevy Tahoe, a Ford Explorer with over a hundred and sixty thousand miles on it and a pickup utility truck.
Who, who drives these trucks? Wait, I was going to get the fire department next, but we can go there now.
For myself?
Yeah.
The Chevy Tahoe is myself.
Right.
The um, utility is the uh, the, the personnel when they go out to training or classes. And then um, the uh, the other staff vehicle is just a replacement for one that has a hundred and sixty thousand miles on it. And it's pretty much no longer usable.
Jay, on the maintenance cost also, uh, do you guys do all the maintenance? Or do we still do our own maintenance?
So there's, yeah, go, Anthony, if you want to address that, there's two different options that we can go with.
Yeah, there are two options. So specifically, um, our program has an outsourced maintenance option. So you can. Um, tap into the same infrastructure that the Enterprise Rent-A-Car sister company uses for the rental division. So you would hop on to the same vendors. That we use with national pricing, um, for parts and labor. So that's if you wanted to outsource otherwise.
Okay.
Uh, can you guys hear me? Sorry, I think I froze.
Yeah, we can hear you. Thank you.
Um, so we do have an outsourced otherwise. For the purposes of the analysis, we used our maintenance data to determine what your maintenance expense would reduce to. With a newer fleet. Um, but that is with using the same process that's in place today. So the choice is yours.
Yeah, so there is an option with maintenance where you have a certified mechanic who's certified through Enterprise where all via, you pay like an annual fee per vehicle. And you take it to that location that's been certified or approved by the enterprise. And basically you pay the annual fee. And so no matter what that maintenance, whatever was ever required at that time, it's, you take it in. And then the mechanics or that, that auto repair shop will actually bill Enterprise directly. So. But what we're seeing is with, especially like even from a public, from the public work side, we've got a lot of old vehicles that have been in the fleet. We've been trying to in the last couple of years to purchase new vehicles. And we're spending a lot more than what even it would be to replace these ten or nine that we're looking at. Which significantly reduces the maintenance cost because now we're only paying for oil changes, maybe tire rotations and, and tire replacement, maybe. After two years, based on the annual, based on the annual usage of those vehicles. Um, and so the maintenance costs go down when, when the vehicles are newer. Uh, instead of having to have these older vehicles where we're replacing significantly more expensive parts and labor, it's built into uh. Fixing these old vehicles.
It kind of, um, it kind of becomes an asset management um, program. And so, you know, um, with asset management. You should have a program where you're, um, it's kind of, you know, you're coming in with new kind of, uh, what is it? Last in, first out. And so um, I think it's called LIFO for accounting uh, purposes. And so what happens is that you need to have a management program to, for asset replacement. And in this case, fleet replacement. You don't want to hold on to a vehicle more than five years, um, and then pay a high uh, uh, amount of maintenance costs. When it's just as easy or more uh, cost efficient to just replace it. With this type of program, it's less out of pocket. And so it's not like, you know, we're, 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 it's not coming on as an asset. It's a, it's a fixed cost that we're going to pay. It's kind of like a lease program. With the exception of that, it's a, it's a rotation, kind of an asset rotation or fleet rotation. Anthony, wouldn't you say? I mean, that's really kind of how I understand it is it's a rot- a fleet rotation program where, you know, you're rotating cars every five years. So that your um, maintenance costs are very minimum. All you're doing is uh, you know, tires or, or oil changes like Sean said.
Correct. So the funding mechanism that we're utilizing here is called an open-ended equity lease, which is really another word for a slowed finance. The reason why we have it set up that way is because specifically with budgetary dollars in the government space. A lot of our clients say that they would like to do more replacements with less capital outlay, which is really what that allows us to do. Um, in order to minimize the fleet budget. So what we do is by replacing more vehicles with less capital outlay. We're able to capitalize on higher resale dollars because you're now getting out of vehicles that have higher proceeds with more value in them. Um, you're recognizing that in your budget. In tandem with that, you're going to see a reduction in your maintenance and fuel expense. Now. That does not mean with the term lease, I just want to make sure that, that, that does not mean that you are expected to get out of the vehicle at the said term. It is something that we evaluate in an ongoing basis with the data points that we have at our, at our discretion. Um, age, mileage, maintenance spend, fuel economy and optimal resale value. All of that helps us determine what is the optimal time to replace a vehicle. So your police interceptors that have hefty aftermarket on them. They're going to have a different hold period than say a public works utility truck or just your basic SUV. So we monitor the market and we make those recommendations. So that way to Jasmine's point, you're only paying for what you use. And you can get the lowest possible cent per mile. So that's really what we specialize in as a fleet management company, is providing you with that expertise. And also accent, uh, proactive asset management.
So I'll say this, um, in my, my work, we use Enterprise Fleet Management. In fact, I got their card right here. Attached to my keys and they're absolutely fantastic. I, I absolutely love the Enterprise Fleet Management. Um, they're great. I've, everyone knows what I do for work. And I've got myself in some crazy situations and they have come out. I just make a call and they're there as soon as they can be there. My issue isn't with Enterprise Fleet. My end, my issue is with seventeen vehicles. Uh, we just bought fire department, I mean, the police department, five vehicles. We're about to buy, possibly buy the fire department, two large vehicles. We bought new vehicles for public works. We are buying a lot of freaking vehicles around here. It's a lot of money going out. And I don't even have a list of what vehicles are being replaced. I don't have anything that has to do with this, this item on the agenda.
This is just a discussion and direction item. It was more created uh, to present to the council this idea uh, that we've been kind of researching. And working on when um, if it is the direction of the council to move forward with something like this. Um, at the next council meeting, uh, we would be presenting to you a contract with Enterprise Fleet Management. Along with a list of, a, a detailed list of the vehicles that are being rotated in and the ones that are being rotated out.
Okay, so when we bring this back, or when this comes back, if we approve this, it'll come back and we will get a list of vehicles. And we will be able to approve or pull out any vehicles that we don't agree with.
I believe so, Kyle. Um, because at the, at the next council meeting, my plan is to bring forth um, the actual contract to enter into an agreement. But I think when we're entering into an agreement, we're not necessarily signing on to actually the list of um, vehicles to be rotated out. We're just signing on to the program. So tonight's, uh, the intent of tonight's item was just to present the idea to council, get your buy-in. Get your approval, um, that, that this is something that you guys want to buy into and you are on board with staff. Uh, to support this idea and, and to go down this path for the city uh, with regard to fleet management. Uh, and then at the next council meeting, I'll be bringing in uh, the actual contract to enter into this program. And then at that time, we can, we can talk about, uh, we can present a, um, along with the same item of the contract approval, we can. Present to you the list of vehicles that are being um, rotated out and rotated or brought in or purchased essentially. Um, through this program. And then you can kind of go through and, you know, kind of line item by line item, say yes or no, if, if that's what the council chooses to do so.
Correct. And if I could also provide some confirmation there, Jasmine. The agreement is a master equity lease agreement, which would be what you would enter into. However, each individual vehicle is its own agreement. So. Upon entering into the agreement, that does not mean that you are definitely going to be ordering vehicles through Enterprise, leasing vehicles through Enterprise. That gives us the authority to go ahead and establish a line of credit on your behalf. Um, activate an account for us to do those. And then we would have another agenda item to go vehicle specific. Um, I do want to touch on just some things that are happening in the industry, just as far as our proactive fleet management strategy. I'm sure you all are hearing about the widely publicized microchip shortage and we are seeing major delays in vehicle production. And output from the manufacturers. So we are asking our clients to think not just in a six-month timeframe, but also a twelve-month timeframe to remain proactive in a replacement plan. Cause it does take time for vehicles to go from order to delivery with lead times. With that being said, upon signing on vehicles. You will not actually start paying for them until you take delivery of them. In this strategy, we're looking to order them directly from the manufacturer. Which could take anywhere from three months to six months, depending on the model and then, and the manufacturer. So we are looking at a long-term plan for the fiscal year. So if that has any, any um, indication on maybe why we determined these. Uh, seventeen vehicles, there was more to look on a, on a larger scale of time.
I think the earliest that we can, we would be even seeing a new vehicle would be like December of twenty twenty-one. And so this is just a very proactive approach, bringing it forth and identifying the needs, you know, from a, from a person. Proactive standpoint. And so, you know, the city has been very reactive when it comes to asset management, um, capital needs. As well as fleet management. We kind of wait for things to break down and then, you know, pay a hefty price and maintenance costs to realize. Oh yeah, this, this particular vehicle, yeah, you know, we need to replace it. And so, you know. Being on a proactive approach, which is kind of how I like to do things, is to think, you know, six months in advance, year in advance, five years in advance. Let's see what it is that we need so that we can have a proactive, because proactively, things cost you a lot less than reactively.
Now, do you have any programs that would, we could merge our, the, the vehicles we have now into your program?
Yes, so we do have, um, we partner with Bright Express for fuel management and we also have our own maintenance management program as well. So if you wanted to have a bridge program for us to start gathering maintenance data on your owned vehicles today, we can certainly put a program like that in place. What that allows us to do is track your maintenance and fuel expense on a per-unit basis. Also track your miles and determine a cent per mile to operate. That helps me and my client strategy manager team. Determine a proactive replacement strategy using logical data points that we have that come in through the automated data feed. So we do have programs like that in place that we could do in the interim while waiting for new vehicles to arrive.
Okay. I like the concept because it, it'll save the city money in the long run. You know.
Oh, yeah.
By, and, and we would all have good vehicles in, in the long run too. And I like the concept, but like he said, we, we've just bought some new cars. That's why I was asking if we could merge some of our cars. Our new cars into this program that we've already bought, so.
Well, one of the benefits is, is that, you know, I, we've got nine vehicles in public works that we're looking at are vehicles. We've had vehicles that go back as far as like the nineties. That we've got still in the fleet. And as you can see even from the numbers that have been provided, at forty-nine thousand dollars. We budget almost a hundred thousand dollars a year in vehicle purchases. And we just seem, we never seem to be able to catch up to the aging vehicles on the backend. And so this is a good opportunity, which, which I see. Is to kind of catch up from the past. And even in, in some of the other departments, like with the fire department, some of the older vehicles have been in the fleet for a long time. Um, they start becoming more and more in terms of maintenance costs. And we're spending a lot more in maintenance costs on a lot of these vehicles. Um, and so that's just kind of have that in, in the mi- the mindset as well as that, you know, the, the. you know, the, the reduced maintenance, but we can try to get these vehicles to, so our guys are driving more reliable vehicles as well. Um, but in the newer vehicles that we've recently purchased are going to stay in the fleet and not be a part of this until they get to the point where they're actually worth going and trading them in and then in re- and rego- and going back through the pro- and getting into the program. Because the unique thing about the whole program is the fact that they have some of the largest buying capacity, just like a government agency does in terms of the ability to get the lowest price for these vehicles. And even after three years, it's still, it's still beneficial to sell it and you can still make more than what the actual retail price would have been when some, when a consumer bought it. So that's where the equity kind of builds in and has a huge benefit with their buying power. Um, because I asked them that question, like what's, how do you guys benefit from this? And this from the other, your, their other management costs and those types of things. But the equity is coming back to the city and we're getting that, we're, we're taking advantage of that buying power. So, um, that just kind of, just some additional information when it comes to, you know, I know it's a lot of vehicles, but I think there's some good benefit to help us get caught up too in some of our aging, uh, fleet.
Yeah, if we tried to buy that many vehicles, we couldn't do it for that money either.
Oh, oh yeah, no, most definitely. And then I think, you know, something to keep in mind is that this is just the first step in the right direction. Um, we do want to move forward. Um, I think I've shown great interest in, uh, going through their management program as well alongside with this vehicle replacement program. Um, only because there's a fixed cost component, like, um, you know, uh, uh, for, for one fiscal year, let's just say hypothetically, I don't know what the exact number is. It's going to be, you know, maintenance costs for our whole fleet is going to be a hundred thousand dollars. And so it doesn't matter if it costs two hundred thousand dollars or, you know, three hundred thousand dollars to maintain our vehicles. But with this strategy, it makes sense because you're, you're having newer vehicles on fleet and so your maintenance costs are low, but you do have that control, you know, it's kind of about, it talks about like price floors. And so you have a fixed cost and so it, it can't go any higher than that. So, you know, kind of similar to the city attorney contract, you know, whatever our, our, we have a fixed, we have a fixed cost. And so whether our, you know, costs come in under or higher, we're just going to pay what we're going to pay. And so that from a budgetary standpoint, that's a, a lot easier for me to manage and build into the budget as opposed to, you know, going off of historical costs. Because, you know, what does that tell you? Fixed cost is way better than a estimate because you know exactly it's, it's a concrete number that you're working with. And so we are working on that, but one of our concerns was that we don't want to drive to Fresno. We don't want to drive to Hanford to maintain our vehicles. We want somebody in town. And so, you know, I've presented the idea to Anthony and Kyle to look into, you know, kind of qualifying one of our local businesses as a, you know, a, a, a partner or contracted, um, uh, uh, maintenance partner, um, as part of the enterprise, um, umbrella. And so that is something that they're working out. I mean, it's still pretty preliminary and I know they're still doing their research. So it's too early in the stages to even present, but that's kind of what we're looking at on the horizon as a second step into this program. So it's not just a, it's not just a single faceted program. It's a multifaceted program to, to kind of get a better handle and move the city in the right direction. Um, we want to be leaders in the valley. We want to, you know, be the pioneers of the valley and, and kind of, you know, be innovative.
Billingsley takes enterprise, by the way.
What's that?
Said Billingsley does take enterprise, by the way. I've used them several times.
Okay, great, yeah, great.
So I, I like the idea on paper, I, I like the idea though. The idea, I'm just, I just need to see the vehicles, I guess is what I'm trying to say, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can bring that back in the next meeting.
Yeah, I like the concept. It's, it's great, I think, and saves us a lot of money in the long run.
Yeah, does, I mean, does it have to be in a bundle? Or can we pick throughout the years, like the cars that need to get, get done? So we can have like a rotation going?
And that's eventually where, where we'll get to is, I mean, right now, we're looking at the critical, the vehicles that we feel that need, need replacing. And then there are vehicles in our fleet because the, it's not, and it, these aren't all our vehicles and all of our fleets that we're, we'd be replacing now. These are the ones we've identified as either ones that have been causing a lot of issues in terms of maintenance and taking advantage of that. So replacing them rather than spending more on maintenance the next two years when, when we can build into the budget, which we already have really, I mean, we'd be able to pull most of this off based on the current budget numbers.
Yeah, I think it's, well, I think you got our, uh, our direction just to bring it back and show us what you can do.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Um, so we'll bring the master agreement to the council along with a list of the vehicles with detailed information for the council to kind of go through and just really see, you know, what, what vehicles are being replaced and get that, you know, background information. And then at that time, um, we're not making a commitment, um, at the next meeting on the twentieth. We're just, all we're doing is we're just approving the program and we're saying, yes, we're interested in this program, we want to take advantage. And then, um, what that does is by getting your direction tonight, it gives me enough information to be able to build these numbers into the, the draft, the draft of the budget that you're going to see on the twentieth, uh, along with the revenue so that you can see, you know, if this program is something that we're going to go forward with, what is it, what do the numbers look like? Because I know that's really what it comes down to. It's, it's all about the money, right? Like, can we make it work? And so, you know, and that was another reason for us to present this item tonight rather than at the next council meeting so that, you know, we get your buy-in to, to build those numbers so that you see that complete picture on the twentieth of what it truly looks like.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Kyle. Thank you.
Thank you for your concern, council.
Okay, we'll go to an item number three, uh, discussion, direction and potential action items regarding the street hump program. Larry?
Okay, um, so I was asked to, uh, develop a street hump, uh, program. And in order to do so, full disclosure, I modeled this after the city of Sacramento. So there are some parts and, uh, pieces here that may not fit us. And hopefully we can address those and move towards us, uh, something that works for us. Essentially, this is a, a program where, uh, citizens like in a certain area can, uh, pull a vote and they can opt, you know, to have, uh, street humps installed in their area. Um, there's a lot of rules around that. Like for instance, the voting would be if they say that they want this, you know, this, uh, street hump in this area, then like any houses that touch that street, they would, uh, have to vote. Um, in order for a, a vote to move forward, the rules that are, are, uh, written state that you have to have twenty-five percent of the, uh, citizens who respond, right? Okay. Um, and then of those, uh, twenty-five percent, um, it would have to pass for the, uh, two-thirds, right? Um, the vote would be, you know, done by the city, like, like, um, applicant would say, hey, you know, uh, uh, I want this in my area. And then we would find out who lives where and then we'd, you know, mail out the, uh, ballots and, and, uh, such. Um, that's basically how that works. Um, the street humps themselves, I don't know if you guys have ever seen them. Um, you can either do paved or you can do, uh, temporary ones. They tend to last about three to five years. Uh, they're made of like, uh, just a really strong rubber and they come in, you know, many different marking styles. Um, how you want them to look is, you know, uh, sort of up to us or you. They are bolt-on, uh, the work will be done by public works and, um, it wouldn't be very difficult for them. Each, like each one of them costs, if you just do a hump, it's about a thousand dollars. If you do a table, which is like an elongated hump, it's, it's, it is around a two thousand. That excludes, uh, labor costs. So if you want to like, you know, recapture what it is that, uh, public works, you know, puts, you know, into labor, you know, that, uh, uh, that may actually go up. As far as ins- installation and like how, you know, they would be implemented, that's, uh, something from the program that, that I sort of identified that, uh, doesn't really fit well for us, you know, versus what works for Sacramento. You know, obviously we're, you know, way different cities, right? As, as, uh, written there, um, it says that you must have a stretch of road that is, uh, seven hundred and fifty feet. Uh, city blocks are four hundred feet, right? So as written, you would have to have at minimum two city blocks, right? Or you can go for more. Um, that's just, it, um, it, uh, works really well in the newer areas, like say, uh, Sandalwood. Um, you know, the house is down by Merced. You know, it, it sort of lends itself, like their blocks are much, much longer. So that's sort of something that we need to decide and have a firm idea on moving forward. Like, would you want single blocks, you know, you know, to be able to have one versus, you know, like, or you would, you know, mandate like a whole stretch of road? Um, like for instance, I live over on a Coolidge Street. So I live, mm, right, right in the middle block, right? So if I wanted a street hump and it was single blocks only, you would have a street hump right, right in the middle of the run. Or you can make it to where they have to do all three blocks. And then, you know, then, uh, then you could actually have like a well-designed, you know, area. There are some other rules that state, um, where you can remove, relocate them, add more. And all comes down to, uh, votes. It's a similar process where, you know, you have to have, uh, twenty-five percent, about two-thirds. And I believe all of this stuff would have to go in front of city council. Let's see. I think that's pretty much it as far as a high, uh, high, a high-level overview.
For the, uh, the rubberized speed hump, um, is that the same price as one that is like a paved speed hump?
You know, I didn't look into the cost of a paved. And that, uh, price is also going to be widely bearable on the length of the street, right?
Right.
Because you pay, uh, you pay for them in two to three feet sections, so. And also this would be paid for by the, well, uh, presumably by the people who vote yes, right? I think it'd be sort of unfair to, you know, mandate the people who's, who said no. Or the city could absorb the, the full cost that's.
Yeah, good.
What about if there's a, like a neighborhood that wants speed bump, but, you know, would they have to vote? Like, let's say they just want to do it. We didn't, we didn't decide on that street, but they want to do it in their street. Uh, would that work? Um, for example, we said, oh, let's put it on Glen and they had to go for a vote, right? What about, there was a neighborhood, they wanted one, um, would they have to vote on it or?
As written, yes.
And that's really how the program kind of operates is allowing the residents to kind of identify or collectively agree to address the speed, uh, potential speed issue in town. And as Larry mentioned, I think some of the questions that we have are just trying to narrow the scope. So we're consistent with where we're approving these speed humps. Um, you know, specifically trying to stay within residential areas. Um, and then also the length of blocks. Um, and then we can obviously with the cost, we can build, we can figure out costs. We can establish a structure for what the cost would be. So then it's, it's very transparent in terms of what the residents will be expected to pay if they want to put in a speed hump in their particular block. So whether we allow them per block, as Larry was mentioning, on these shorter blocks. See, the seven hundred and fifty feet is really kind of conducive, like we were talking earlier today is that there's stretches in, uh, off the, the subdivision in Merced where there's long stretches, like on, I think it's Petit-Sarah and Chablis and some of those that are longer without any blocks to slow people down, where in other areas of town, you've got, we were lapping, they recall them inverted humps where you have all the, this, the, the drain areas. It's naturally slow people down unless you want to damage your car. Um, but a lot of those east-west streets are where you may see more of that speed because there's nothing slowing them down. So whether we want to say, hey, if you want to have one on a block, you got to convince everyone on that block at a minimum of three blocks because you've got signage, you've got a lot of other things that have to be installed as well as part of these. Um, and I don't know if one block will reduce the amount of safety or reduce the amount of speed in that particular location. Now, you know, maybe there's enough information to show that they go down this one block and they're always turning, everyone's turning in a certain direction once they pass that block. Maybe that's an issue. So I think we, that, that's kind of where, where we, we don't want to kind of blanket make a decision on all of this. We want to have some discussion, get some feedback from the council in terms of kind of some of the things that may or may, you think may or may not work.
From a, like a program, you know, management standpoint, it makes the most sense for me to have a pre-built list of our streets. Just say, hey, you know, if you live on this street, okay, the, you know, we have a pre-built list of, uh, the, of the people who need to be sent, you know, mail-in, uh, ballots. You know, we can already have like a cost, um, associated, like there's, like you'd have all the information upfront as opposed to, you know, block by block, free, uh, free for all. I mean, but it does work both, both, uh, ways, so.
Okay, we have a question from the audience also. Right.
Yeah, we're presenting basically a draft policy. We, at the previous meeting, we, we kind of prepare, we gave them some, gave them information as a future agenda item from other agencies and other programs that have worked. Now Larry's put together a program that really kind of works with Kalinga and kind of took, take, digested all that information. And now it's a matter of, okay, we're seeing some standards that we want to make sure to fit for Kalinga, not necessarily Sacramento, or these are another city that we've been analyzing. So that's where some of the comments from, uh, Larry in terms of we need maybe some other feedback from the council so we can establish that. Or we said it where, hey, you, we can take it to a vote of the residents, but ultimately maybe it comes back to the council for formal approval. So then the residents engage with the council, engage with the city, even though there may be options that way too, um, in terms of the ultimate say, but at least there's some justification in, from residents in terms of their ability to request it. Because it is being installed on a city street, so it may, there may be a spot that just may not work. But at least that would allow staff to analyze it and look at it that, that way too, so.
So basically, act, you're asking if we can give the okay to have people present it? I mean, tell them, tell you that they want it on their street and then you guys will fix up a program for that?
Well, the, the program's kind of.
Or you guys have the program, but you'll, you'll share the cost with them? How much it would cost them for that block or, or that area?
So if we're able to have like a preset list of our streets, right?
But you're not going to get that preset list unless the people ask for them, right?
I mean, it wouldn't be terribly difficult to, um, identify stretches of road where it makes sense, right?
Okay.
Like say, we know that Harrison Hoover, uh, University Streets, you know, you know, streets, uh, streets are long and wide. You have those already, you know, like, okay, so we can have a street hump, uh, program here and here's everyone who needs to vote on it. Here's how much it will be, that sort of thing.
Okay, how about people that, uh, like on Glen Street? If Glen Street's not on that list, uh, can they, can they still request it?
Yes, so like, um, for either version, every street would, would essentially, um, there may be like an exception, right? But yes, like every street would be a part of some kind of like, you know, larger scope. Or, you know, uh, the other option is to just, just leave it as it is to say that you, that you can do, you know, a single block, you know, essentially limit it, not, uh, limit it, but, uh, bring the seven hundred and fifty feet down to four feet. That's sort of the, you know, right and left, you know, hand options here.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think maybe what they did on the seven hundred and fifty feet too, you have more houses on there. So the cost would be cheaper on each house too, so you're just raising the cost if you lower there. Lower the frontage on there, so, too, so.
With a sort of, you know, uh, free-for-all strategy, you know, where you can do it block by block, there is nothing to say that you can't say, that you can't round everyone up in like your neighborhood for, you know, three blocks, two blocks, or, you know, five blocks, and get everyone, you know, you know, to pass like this.
Right.
Everyone share the cost.
Now, would that be a one-time cost uh for the uh people? I mean, these things were out in five years. How, how do you uh work that?
That's a good question. I hadn't thought about that. Um, I would, I would imagine that there are two options at that point. You either make it permanent and, you know, make them repay that cost, or, or, you know, you could just make them repay, you know, whatever it is to install, you know, uh, new ones. I guess the third option would be the city at that point would, would uh, hold that cost.
Now, is there any liability on the city for putting these on, on the street? No liability at all?
No, no, uh, these are, you know, standard, you know, things that, you know, that show up in roadways all the time.
Yeah, because we were, when we tried to do this years ago, it was always uh liability issues uh for the city. That's what they always told us, and that's why we never went for it. And, but uh this was before you and Sean vote. But um, in the old days, they would always try to talk us out of it because it was liabilities and people would hit them and then we'd have to fix their cars and stuff like that, so that's why we never did it.
That's because they're driving too fast. They said, because they're driving too fast.
I'm giving you my age too. Well, I mean, it's, it's.
That you have the proper signage, I mean, it's a.
Well, I mean, it would be like, almost like putting a divider, I mean, it's basically a, a, a road law, right? It would be, you know, like you going over the curb, you know, um.
There's actually two different styles.
Yeah.
The street hump, which is, you know, much more narrow, it's a bit more elongated than like a actual street bump, it's not quite the same, so it's not as harsh. Then you have like a speed table, which is much, much wider, and it's way softer on vehicles, but it is also more expensive.
Because obviously at, you know, you're going residential twenty-five, you're going past that and you break your car. That's not the city's liability, because you're already. It would go curb to curb too, right? That way you couldn't maneuver around it and stuff, because I've seen peo-, you know, people trying to maneuver around and stuff like that. So we have another question. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Um, the only thing I, I think we should do is get the average length of our streets and go with that. You know, instead of the seven hundred and fifty, just find out what our, the average street is and, and go with that number. I think it would be a lot easier for us that way.
Can we find out how much it costs for a paved one too, instead of the rubber, rubber one?
Yeah, it, it might be feasible for that, too.
Also, um, like to see a cost sharing with the city. Um, we do it with sidewalks, we can do it with this too. I don't think the people should have to pay to make sure the kids aren't hit by some speeding driver acting like an idiot. So um, maybe half and half with the city.
Yeah, because you say, you live on Coolidge, those streets are wide. I live on Glen, that's really wide. Of course, one of the reasons why I wanted that medium, what happened? First day was done, somebody just flew on it, you know, and that's the whole thing, that it's, that's to, it did its job, or else it would have hit somebody's car, or somebody would have collided.
I've actually stood there and watched, and the people making that left-hand turn go so much slower.
Exactly. Now they do have to stop, make the left. I know some people don't like it, but it, it's about the safety. And, and things like that would, would make a lot of parents comfortable. I know in all of my neighborhoods, they don't feel comfortable with their kids playing out, outside anymore. And, you know, that, that would be a good thing, that'd be a good thing.
So to summarize, you guys would like me to move forward with, you know, finding the average length and just like, you know, having that written in, and then um, looking at how much for, you know, paved, and then do you like to share the cost with the city?
I think that's everybody consensus of the council, yes. All right.
And a number kind of, a number of, uh, how much would a resident pay from?
Um, so it, it all depends on who votes yes, right?
Yeah.
So let's just use a number, if we, if you only needed to install one hump, you know, that would work in that area. Let's just say it was a thousand dollars. The city would do the in, the installation, you know, find uh no cost there, and then they would pay for five, you know, five hundred. Then you would have to split that five hundred up to whoever would have guessed. So it wouldn't be a, a, a large amount.
And is the council comfortable with the two-thirds majority? Because that's what's built into the program. I think that's, that's what Sacramento used too, right Larry?
Yep.
The two-thirds, so not just a majority, but you got two-thirds.
Is it two-thirds for each area?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is it two-thirds for each area or, or the city altogether?
It'd be for the one, oh no, it's, so if you have a block and you got ten residents, you're going to have to have two-thirds votes of those ten residents in order for it to be approved, allow it to move forward. And then obviously those two-thirds are the ones that are going to pay for one hundred percent of the cost of the hump.
Just, just the ones that approved it.
Just the ones that approved it, yeah. That would be the expectation.
Right, so as a part of uh the application process, you would identify what stretch it is that you want, you know, this to be in, installed on, right? So, yeah.
Okay. Do you need anything else on that? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll got them, go to item number four. Discuss direction and potential action items regarding the installation of benches in various locations in the city. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor. This was a future agenda item requested by Mayor Pro Tim Singleton. I didn't mention it, it changed the agenda, but I was wondering if you want to table this till then, when he's, when he's here.
We were just talking about that, if we wanted to table it and would, go ahead and table it until he comes back, because it's his program, so. Okay, we'll go ahead and table this one. Um, we don't need a vote for that, do we? Just make consensus, right? Okay, we'll go to item number five. Discussion direction and potential action items uh regarding the replacement of fire department apparatus. Chief?
Larry, I'm not able to share screen.
Shannon, can you make Greg a?
It's podium.
Panelist? Oh, podium? Oh, is that what it is? Oh, it's on there. If he has to be a co-host. Shannon, can you make him a co-host, please?
I just did.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, this was a future agenda item request by Councilman Atkinson about uh coming to you guys with a presentation to replace some fire apparatus, or two pieces of fire apparatus at our department. So I came up with this presentation for you this evening. Uh, I'm going to be talking to you about our current state of our apparatus, our, the replacement apparatus ideas that we are considering a purchase breakdown, as well as options and recommendations for you to discuss. So this is our current ladder truck. Uh, it is a frontline apparatus, uh, it is a nineteen eighty-six E-one, it's eighty-foot ladder. It is approximately thirty-five years old. It was bought used in two thousand and four for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the Pebble Beach Fire Protection District when it was already eighteen years old. Uh, the, the department has spent approximately a hundred and twenty thousand in maintenance and repairs since two thousand and four. And it was at a service for the majority of eighteen due to these repairs. Uh, NFP nineteen oh one, which is the standard for fire apparatus, recommends that a first-out apparatus only be in service for ten years. And it's been in service for eighteen, uh, I'm sorry, thirty-five. At fifteen years, it should be placed as reserve, and at twenty-five years, it should be replaced altogether. We are ten years past the actual uh recommendation for replacement. This is our current engine, this is our uh, what we call a pumper or a regular fire engine, it's a two thousand and nine, and it's twelve years old, it was actually bought brand-new in two thousand and nine, and it is right at the recommended mark for a frontline apparatus. Has a few years left till it should be placed into reserve status. This is engine three seventy-one, and this is our reserved fire engine. It is a two thousand and seven, it is fourteen years old, and it was bought used in twenty fourteen when it was seven years old, at an auction. And it is right at the recommended mark for a reserve, uh, within the next year or two, it would be, will be placed into, into reserve status. This is our patrol, or what we call a type six. This is a two thousand and ten Ford F-four fifty, it's eleven years old. Um, it has a hundred and eighty-gallon GPM pump, a three-hundred-gallon tank, and a ten-gallon foam tank, and I'll explain to you why that's impor- important when we get to its replacement apparatus. And this was custom-built in two thousand and ten, and it's right at the uh, the ten-year mark for first-line apparatus. So that's the, that's the current state of our fleet right now, and then this is um, and I, what we are recommending for replacement. Uh, Captain Long is here this evening uh for any technical questions regarding the apparatus. Um, he has worked diligently to research this vehicle, um, all the ins and outs, many pictures, going over the specs, doing everything to make sure that this is what we wanted. Um, this is actually a twenty nineteen, it is a hundred and ten-foot rear-mount ladder. Um, it is a demo, which means that it's actually available right now, rather than waiting for the year period for a new build. It has a two thousand GPM pump where our current ladder truck is fifteen hundred GPM. It has a five hundred-gallon water tank where our current is three hundred, it has a two hundred and twenty-gallon foam tank where our current has none. It's a steel ladder versus an aluminum ladder, and it has four outriggers versus two, which is for stability and safety when you um, when you level the apparatus to raise the ladder. Now, when you think about a ladder truck.
Hey Greg?
Yeah.
It seems like your screen is frozen on the uh zoom side. So could you reshare your screen?
Yes.
There we go, thank you.
Is it sharing now?
It seems so.
Okay, continuing, so um, this is a demo, like I said, this is a, a demo ladder, ladder that is available right now. Now, when you talk about ladder trucks, um, you don't just think about the vertical reach of a ladder truck. A ladder truck can be used for many emergency operation scenarios. Um, it's not always the vertical reach of a tall building, but it's the horizontal reach of a long, large building uh set back from the street, depending on how far the curb is away. In addition to that, one of the most dangerous operations that a firefighter can perform is a vertical ventilation on a roof. So getting out and climbing onto the roof, you're unaware of what's underneath your surroundings. If you have the ability to work off the ladder, it protects the firefighter and makes it that much safer. So when you think about the need of a ladder truck, don't always think about the vertical reach. There are many more operations that we can use for this ladder truck than just reaching tall buildings. So this specific ladder truck, they're offering it to us for a cost of eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. They're going to give us thirty thousand dollars allotted for upgrades, and one of those upgrades is the twenty-gallon foam tank that is not currently on there. Um, it's going to cost us about fifty thousand to paint and stripe the apparatus into our department's colors and logos. And then you have eighty-three thousand dollars in taxes. Brings a grand total of just over a million dollars for this piece of equipment. Now, if you compare it to a brand-new piece of equipment, it, you're starting at one point four million, that's starting at one point four million. So this demo is about a three hundred and forty thousand dollar savings. Also with a new purchase, you're looking at three hundred and sixty-five days plus to take delivery, where this demo, uh, as of, as of an hour ago, is still available. And if the direction leads to um moving forward, uh, we could take delivery in ninety to a hundred and twenty days. And the first payment would not be due until we take delivery, which would go into the next fiscal budget, which this apparatus has been budgeted for. So this is a type three, this is uh what we're looking to purchase to replace the type six, or augment the type six. This is a twenty twenty-one Model Thirty-four Type Three CAL FIRE Tag-Lon. This is what is used in the majority of your wildland firefighting. This is a uh four-by-four with a high clearance. This one has a five hundred GPM pump where the, the patrol has a hundred and eighty, and that's what I was referring to earlier was this is a, a lot bigger pump and pump size. Five hundred gallon tank versus a three hundred gallon tank and a twenty gallon foam tank versus a ten. Uh, these costs are about two hundred and ninety-seven thousand. There is a thirteen thousand dollar fee for pre-construction and final visit. Uh, taxes are twenty-seven thousand, and so your total cost is about three hundred and forty thousand. There is no upcharge for paint and striping, and just like the demo ladder truck, uh, this would take ninety to a hundred and twenty days to take delivery. One of the reasons we are considering this type three apparatus is the local response need around the area of Kalinga and the surrounding uh mountains and hills. Uh, because we are so far out here on the west side, we are going to be first in before CAL FIRE for these types of incidences. So this piece of equipment would allow us to go into this rugged terrain easy, more easily than the type six uh pickup truck that we have now. Uh, and we have, we would have interoperability with CAL FIRE because they have the same apparatus. Um, type three is one of the most requested initial responses for a state out-of-county assignment. I spoke to the ECC Command Center and uh asked the, the chief in charge there that if you get a assignment for out-of-county, what's the first piece of equipment you're looking for, and he said a type three without hesitation. The reimbursement cost is higher compared to a type six, so we get reimbursed from the state at a higher cost. It has a higher clearance for remote access in our response area than our patrol truck. And it has higher capacity water and foam tanks, and it has more space for personnel and equipment. The uh chart on your right, um, I kind of did a breakdown, I'm have to look up screen because this is too small. So the uh top one is the actual revenue we received from going out on strike teams last year. The names of the fires, and then the state reimburses you for personnel, apparatus, and then admin fee. And so you can see how much we received from each fire. So we received a total of two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in three hundreds, two, two seventy-four, three sixty-three, ninety-two, right? So that's what we received back. We, it cost us about a hundred and thirty-three thousand to pay for the overtime. So we netted a hundred and forty thousand in revenue by, by going out on these strike teams assignments. So what I did after talking to the ECC chief was hypothetically speaking, and, and we can't guarantee anything, but hypothetically speaking, let's say every single fire was a type three fire engine request. So I plugged those numbers in, we would receive two, three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, and after overtime, we would have netted two hundred and eight thousand. So by having a type three engine, we could have seen a possible increase of sixty-eight thousand dollars in revenue from going out on strike team assignments. The purchase breakdown, um, we don't really need to worry about option two because option one is available. Option two was up there in case, uh, we found out that the demo was sold prior to this presentation. But as of today, it is still available. So there's the cost of the truck, the cost of the type three, and then we need to um allot about a hundred and fifty thousand for equipment for both apparatus, so that brings you a total of one point five million, which is a savings of three hundred and forty thousand over a new build. Um, there's two ways we can go about doing this, uh, we can finance both the ladder and the type three, and that would be about a hundred and forty thousand a year, which has been budgeted into next budget. Um, or we could just finance the ladder truck and purchase the type three, and we would look at about a hundred and six thousand a year, and if we purchased the type three, if the scenario played out as I presented, then we could probably pay it off in three, possibly two years. So some options to, recommendations to consider for your discussion, um, I, I recommend purchasing the demo ladder truck if uh it leaves that way. Um, we would, we would still do a final inspection before taking a delivery, so if there's any concern or anything we found, um, Captain Long and myself will, will be making a trip back to Ohio to um do the final inspection before we take delivery. And then, like I said, the first payment isn't due until we take delivery, which would be into the next budget. Uh, we don't need to worry about the demo being sold, and then I recommend purchasing the type three uh based off the data I gave you about the reimbursement. Uh, we could attempt to sell the current ladder truck. I know Captain Long has been doing some research, and uh there's a possibility we could sell it. In fact, there are some museums that are interested in it. In fact, there's some museums that are interested in it. Uh that tells you the the state of the engine. So um that's an option we can do to help with some of this cost as well. And then we didn't really discuss it, but one of the original ideas was to replace all of our apparatus. But I think after doing the research and getting down to the 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 numbers. That we can postpone the purchase of the type one until next year. So right now, we're just looking at replacing the ladder truck and purchasing a type three. So I know that was a lot of information. Uh I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
In the last eighteen years that you've had the ladder truck, how many times it has actually been used on a fire?
I've only been here for one year, so I'm gonna direct that to Captain Long.
That's kind of a hard question to actually give you a definitive answer on, but um for the last year of, I think it was two thousand eighteen. And nineteen, the thing was mostly out of service. Uh there were a a couple of structure fires that we probably could have utilized it. And it was not available. Um we have had some significant um apartment complexes. Those are also known as a target hazard. Um we've had a few of those and as a matter of fact. We requested a ladder truck from Kings County Fire, which took about an hour or so. Um so I can't really say, you know, exactly how many uh incidents. But the other unique thing about that ladder truck is. Um it's the ladder that's on top of it. But along with it, you have a pump. You've got, it carries hose, it carries ground ladders and um and it carries water. So it's an engine with basically an aerial device. So it's something that you you don't just have to use it for. A structure fire, you can use it on just about anything except for probably a a wildland fire. You know, but I I push that envelope. So uh but no, it it's um it's not just a structure that we're gonna use it on. There's also um rescues. We've uh we've had, we actually had a an individual trimming a tree. Um it's it's been a few years, but uh he uh had a heart attack while he was up in the tree. And we didn't have a ladder truck. Um those were things, those were events that have occurred in the past prior to us receiving this thing. And so it it has definitely assisted. Um the chief was talking about, you know, the vertical versus the horizontal reach. The the one thing that we're worried about is a firefighter going through the roof. Because the easiest way to put the fire out is let the fire come up and out. So we cut a hole in the top of of a roof. And it could be a a single story residential dwelling. Um and we're gonna put firefighters up on that roof. Um and and that's a really unsafe operation, especially with a lot of the lightweight construction. It doesn't take long for the fire to burn through those members and uh now you're you're on, you're on a collapse. Um with uh we've actually utilized our truck in the past. Um on a few of those single story residential structures. You put the, put the stick out, you can walk out to the end of it, lean over the side with a chainsaw. Cut a hole, punch through the ceiling and you never even came in contact with the roof. And then, and then you're out of the way and it takes one firefighter to do that. Um I've personally done that, but. Recently, um recently, I think we've been pretty safe, but um.
Yeah, and one and one thing Captain Long already touched on was the rescue gear and equipment. It will have specialized equipment that our engine does not have. Uh rescue equipment, uh the extrication equipment, a Stokes basket. There will be other pieces of equipment to utilize for different types of emergency situations. That our other piece of equipment will not have.
And we've used this for a first out too. Cause I I know it was a first out engine for a while with certain captains and stuff would like to drive that engine and. They would take it out on a first response.
And our deployment, our deployment model currently is a structure fire, we respond an engine and a truck to.
How much the do, let's say it was purchased, how much do they charge, do you, the the fire department or city charge for another city to request it? Like if they had a structural fire that.
There is no, there is no cost. It's an auto aid agreement or a mutual aid agreement that we have with each with the agency. Especially Fresno County Fire Protection District. They're our closest or Kings County. Um it's it's kind of a we help you, you help us thing. Uh when they call us, we go when they, when they, we call them, they go.
Alright, so when we talk about this ladder truck, Ronald Reagan was president. This thing came out off the line. This is how long this thing has been here. Um I've seen it, I, when I first start here, I didn't see it for like a year because it was down in maintenance now. Uh are we keeping up with the public safety needs of the city? We look at the new buildings that are coming in, um particularly, let's look at the uh three story um retirement home. What happens if we get a third uh fire on the third story of their retirement home and we don't have a ladder truck? We are in some serious stuff. How are we gonna rescue those people? Then what's gonna happen? Those people are gonna look to us and say, why did you not keep us safe?
And and I and I can confirm, the crews went out last week um and took our current ladder truck at the eighty foot that we have. And they were unable to ladder certain apartment complexes, the college gym, I believe. Yeah, um so there and then they said, you know, chief, if we had an extra ten to fifteen feet, we would have been able to reach. So the 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 hundred and ten versus eighty does make a significant difference. Yeah, the high school auditorium, they were unable to reach it.
Right. And then we have um more two story buildings coming in. Uh we have more uh two story apartments. The uh low income apartments that are coming in too. We have another senior apartments that are coming in that are gonna be two stories. We have the two story apartments off Sacramento, is that correct? That are gonna be phase two of that is coming in soon. Uh we have the dementia center. Are they gonna be two story? Right. So are are we, yeah. So are we keeping up with the needs of the public? With the public safety needs of this community. Um I don't think we are. I think using a truck from nineteen eighty six that works sometimes and sometimes isn't even in Kalinga. Is not helpful at all. Um I think that uh it's time, we we have. This council and previous councils have worked very hard to get us to the position that we're in financially and staff. And I think that we are at a place where we can finally do something like this.
And I was here when we we bought that engine and um I know, that's, it's funny. I am showing my age, but um that was a, that was a real boost for the city.
Mayor, were you talking about engine number one?
Almost. Yeah. Well, when we bought that engine, he was, he was in the fire department. So let's put the age out there. Old man. Yeah, uh you were in the fire department then and and in fact, you were one of the backers for the uh for our ladder truck at that time too. And you did, he did all the uh information for us with a couple, with help from the other uh firefighters and captains and stuff there and. Um he ended up selling it to the council and it was a great deal. And in fact, I still remember the day they brought it in town. We were having a football game on a Friday night and uh they called me up on the phone and said, hey Ron, we're we're in town with a new truck. And I go, well, bring it over to the football game and we'll let you in the gates. And man, they they pulled in and said Pebble Beach on there, you know? And uh so they pulled the fire truck right into the football game and everybody went over there and saw that. I mean, because that was something the city bought and everybody was real proud. And then they were even more proud when they put City of Kalinga on it. So I I think it's a good thing and we could have, just like you said, we could have used it a lot of other times when we didn't have. But when we do have that, I mean, we did take advantage of it when we could. And I I've been up on that ladder a long time ago and uh that's really high up there. Eighty feet, eighty feet is pretty high. Now, this one's a hundred and ten, so uh it's even better now. And when we bought it, we knew we couldn't go to the speech arts building and get on top of there or in some of the other places. And we wish we would have got some, but that's what we could afford at that time. So we always talked about upgrading it eventually when we could, so. And now we can, so I think it's a great idea. And we have the money budgeted right now at two four, but we still have to pass the budget.
I think, um if I may just add a few things, um when we went to the public and we asked for measure J. We made certain promises and one of the promises was that this money would go towards public safety. And that didn't only include um public safety personnel, but something like this is a great win for measure J. And so um uh Greg and I have talked about when, you know, if council approves this, that. You know, this would be a a a a great celebration for the city and to celebrate measure J. Um because without measure J, something like this wouldn't have been possible for this community.
You you say, you know, I I listened to, you know, Captain Long about what the thing that it does. I know we have a one seventy one and a three seventy one engine. Can it, can it kind of take the place of them too?
Yep, so that's the great thing about this is it's really an engine. It's like an engine one seventy one with an aerial device on it. So in the event that uh, you know, while we're waiting for, say, our to replace our type one, which is engine one seventy one.
Yeah.
Uh engine three seventy one, yeah, it's it's been had some mechanical problems. It's been in the shop a few times. I I think we may have kinda tightened up a few of the the nuts and bolts on that thing to keep it from, you know, coming apart on us. Uh you know, for the time being, uh but there's only some, so many things you can do with with age. Um but in the event that engine three seventy one was to go out of service, this ladder truck would absolutely be able to replace. Uh a frontline engine. Um I say a frontline engine, but it would, it would definitely do everything that that frontline engine. Can do with the exception of going off road.
Okay, and we wouldn't be like, we wouldn't be in a hurry to replace. So let's say like you, like you mentioned, if one one seventy one went out, we wouldn't be in a hurry to replace the one seventy one. Because we already have this universal um vehicle that does that.
Uh well, so three seventy one's the older one.
Right.
One seventy one's the newer one and obviously we're up against some some time constraints for one seventy one. I don't think we're anywhere near on like getting rid of engine one seventy one, like the chief was saying. But we're, it's it's getting to that that mileage and the age uh point where we need to, we need to roll it back. Into more of a a second out reserve type. Uh status. Um and and again, that's kind of, I guess, part of the thing that, you know, Jasmine and the chief have talked about is. Is just trying to, trying to coordinate, because we're talking about a lot of money here. And and you just don't go out and buy, you know, a million dollar piece of equipment. And then, you know, the next year, go buy another million dollars and then the next year is go, you know what I mean? We buy this equipment, it's probably, I guarantee you, it's still gonna be in service probably twenty years.
You'll be in the same position.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
And we take really good care of the equipment, so um it's gonna definitely have some longevity. Um at least while we're still here. And then, once we leave, that's gonna be the new chief's responsibility to try to get that replaced.
Okay.
Yeah, that's your question about it being able to to replace one seventy one temporarily. Yes, and that's the reason why of having a pump on it and hose on it is that it can do the function of an engine.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I was, I was asking in case, you know, three seventy one broke down.
We would still have.
And it's like, we we don't have to come to the council and be like, okay, uh we gotta get a new engine because one of our engines.
Now, if we lost one seventy one, it'd be a different story.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's what I was trying to get to. Right, right, okay.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Yeah.
The ladder truck, if you end up selling the other one, where would the money from that sale go? Would that go towards one of the future payments or does that just go back to the city?
So actually, so whether, so fire is funded through the general fund. And so the the um government accounting standards don't let you apply revenues directly to a particular payment. And so what it would go is within the general fund, there's a revenue line item that's titled sale of assets. And so that revenue that's generated from the sale of that asset is that it would go into a revenue account. However, the payment for that that lease comes out of an expense account. And so the two can never co-mingle. You could never co-mingle revenues with your expenses. Because you're not seeing a true picture of what your true expenses are. And so um to answer your question in a general broad overview, it'll come out of the same pot. But uh from a, from a narrow point of view, uh to answer your question, it won't go directly to the line item where the payment is made. Does that make sense?
The general fund.
It would go in the general fund though.
Yeah, it would just come out of the same pot of money within the general fund.
Okay, any other questions for the chief and the captain?
No.
Okay, what would you guys like to do?
I got one thing, um the type three. Uh we make uh revenue off of that every time we go to a wildland fire. Uh we make quite a bit. I believe your 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 slide said at one time.
Three hundred and seventy five thousand last year.
Two hundred and seventy five, which of that a hundred and forty was revenue. Okay, and if we did go to the new type three, uh we could possibly, if things remained exactly the same, which of course they may not. Uh we could make approximately two hundred and eight thousand in revenue after we pay off.
After we paid the overtime.
Right, so when it comes to the type three, we see a total price of three hundred and thirty eight thousand. If we went in on cash with that and got the type three without financing it, could we get a lower cost on it?
We can certainly find out, absolutely.
Okay.
The sales, the sales people are willing to work with us and they are on standby. For um our phone call after this meeting this evening to and to to discuss options like that.
Alright, so I hate financing, so I, my my idea would be to. Pay the type three in cash, three hundred and thirty eight thousand. If we have to use our reserve or whatever, we can use that. And then we you, we take that money that we're gonna get from the reimbursements of two hundred and eight thousand. And whatever budgetary way that Jasmine has to do it, we take that two hundred and eight thousand and apply it to the payment of the ladder truck. And we could pay that ladder truck off in less than five years. And we're gonna cut off a lot of finance charges on the way and, you know, anytime we don't have to pay the bank money is a good time.
And we would almost have that truck paid off.
Right.
Next year, almost.
Yeah.
What's that, Jasmine?
Just on a one caveat, the cost of borrowing money is next to nothing right now. So if there was an opportunity to hold on to cash on hand at the moment and not spend that money. Um because right now, um it's time to hold on to cash and, you know, invest. Um and then borrow money because the cost of borrowing money is next to nothing. Of course, it's a council decision. If you guys wanna buy it cash, you can. Um we have the means. It it it'll, it'll mean that a reserve requirement won't be met. Um but just if if there was ever a time to borrow money, now is the time. So um as a finance director and as just a finance person in general, I'd rather recommend financing at the moment. Just because of the cost of borrowing is so low and holding on to your cash long term. When the cost of borrowing is a lot higher, you're gonna get your bigger bang for your buck at that time. Buying in cash because the cost of borrowing is expensive. If that makes sense. But of course, it's your decision. I'm not here, you know.
I guess my idea is. We could pay everything off a lot sooner is my idea and get it out of the way. If we pay off this in five years. We don't know where we're gonna be at in five years. What if we're in terrible budget situation and now we have a hundred and forty thousand dollar a year bill? How, what are we gonna do? Start laying off people? So I'd like to just get it out of the way as soon as possible. And especially if we're not paying, if we come in with on the type three and we get it at a cheaper rate because we are paying cash. And we don't have to uh pay yearly on the type three, we can use that money to pay off the ladder truck. I just hate debt. I can't stand it. Hate finance charges. I've been in trouble too many times in my life because of debt on my own. I have a thing for debt. I can't stand it, so.
But you have me managing your debt. There's a difference.
Well, I'm gonna give you my bank account and you can start managing mine.
Be happy to. Um you know, it it of of course, you know, I'm here to do whatever the council wishes. Um but I'm also here to be your advisor uh when. Um, but I'm also here to be your advisor uh when it comes to expending money and, you know, financing money and uh investing money. Um, I do look out for the best interest of the city because I don't see it as my money. I see it as the residents' money. And so I want to get the city the biggest bang for its buck when it comes to, you know, our 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 finances. Um.
We also don't know how long you're gonna be here, Jasmine.
Uh, that I can't promise.
See, so what happens if you leave in a year or two and now we gotta figure this out?
How how long would it take for you to get an answer for the, if we do go cash?
We 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 can call them tomorrow. I think Captain Long might even call them right now.
Right? Can you, can you, can you check on the cash price versus five years and then ten years? We already know what it is for ten, but what it is for cash and five years?
Can Enterprise Fleet pick up this?
I believe the quote before you is not a financed quote. I think it's just a base quote.
It's a base cash quote.
For purchase, it's not, the financing wouldn't be through the the purchaser, the the uh vendor for the actual piece of equipment you're purchasing. The financing would happen uh through our financial advisor, through our municipal advisor, uh through a lease uh backed by um uh the equipment um as security, or it would be some sort of a a bond that would be issued uh for the purchase of these, this equipment uh for public safety. Uh, it'll most likely be a GO bond, which is short for general obligation bond. Um, they're bonds that are sold on the bond market for general fund type purposes. Um, they're not revenue bonds or anything, just, you know, kind of similar to what we sold for the water and sewer bonds. They're GO bonds. And so they're backed by the actual asset or the the liquidity or the um financial status or condition of the organization as a whole.
We're still giving money to the bank when we don't have to. That's my, that's my thing. That we could save that money and that could be our money. Um, I just don't like giving money to the bank. Why make them fat and happy when we don't have to? And then we could still pay it off in a lot shorter time and save even more money from uh the type three um reimbursements that we get.
And these reimbursements are are made because we didn't have a type three, right? If we had a type three, the reimbursement would be higher.
Correct, yeah. The breakdown I showed you was what we actually received this year by sending out a pickup truck and a patrol versus what could have been the potential if all of the assignments would have been a type three. And that was based off the conversation I had with the chief at the command center saying, yeah, if you have a type three, we're calling you first.
Right, and by the predictions, i- it's been, it's gonna be a drier year, a drier summer this summer.
Correct, and we're starting earlier this year as well.
And I I would hate to lose the chance of not having the opportunity to make money instead of owe money.
Correct, and if we take delivery in ninety to a hundred and twenty days, we still hit this fire season.
Exactly, and like like you said, my next question was, what will be called first?
Correct.
Okay, you know, I just see a win-win.
Okay, taking the that truck out of it, what do you guys think about the other other two? Go ahead and lease them. The best leasing plan?
A ladder truck?
The ladder truck, yeah. It's a lease.
It's a finance.
Is it? Well, it's a lease finance, basically, isn't it?
Is there any way we can table it to the next meeting so we can get the actual numbers, rough numbers?
Uh, if we do that, it might not be.
Demo may not be there.
The demo won't be available.
So I'm all for getting the demo. Uh, this is, we saved three hundred thousand by.
We financed the ladder, we'll be.
Yeah.
Actually, the type three.
So the demo, the way that the transaction would take place is we would pay from our cash and then we would finance it after the fact. Just because of the um art sense of urgency in in securing that piece of equipment. Um, we would, we would cut them a check from our uh our general fund, and then we would finance it.
Now, if we finance the uh the truck, how many years would that be financed right now?
The projection is ten years.
And how much a year?
Hundred and six thousand.
So I'm saying we can take the revenue that we get from the type three and.
But we would be paying in ten years. Wow. Yeah, that's a lot of money. If you look at it like that.
And then we find then the type three up together, we're looking at more money.
And then we're, and if we get it for cash, it'll be cheaper.
Cheaper, but there is revenue not going to enter, or whatever is going into.
The pay, the down payment or the payoff of the aerial.
Yeah.
Ladder truck, correct.
Now, if we, uh Jasmine, if we paid cash for the, for the, for that truck and then financed the uh the ladder truck. Uh, is that in our budget?
Right now, what's in our budget is a ten-year uh financing of the complete app uh apparatus purchase, right Greg, or did we adjust that?
Uh, no, that is the, currently in budget is the uh financing of both apparatus. So we would save money if we did the purchase of the type three.
In the long run.
In the long run.
In the long run, yeah. I was stuck there. I was like, that's.
No, I'm sorry, in the long run, yes.
Yes, because you wouldn't be paying financing charges on that. Um. But that will, that money will come out of your reserves because as I, as the budget sits right now, we're putting in about two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in reserve to maintain the fifty percent reserve requirement in the current budget year. And so um by doing so, you will not be able to do that. And you'll have a shortfall, uh, or yeah, or you'll have to pull money out of reserves, I'm sorry, yeah.
We wouldn't have anything in the reserves, or?
You would have money in the reserve. Um, you just wouldn't meet the reserve requirement. So this year, um, as part of the budget, uh, what's gonna be presented on the twentieth is that we're having to put two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars into the reserve. Because our expenses are uh higher uh than the previous fiscal year. And so in order to maintain a fifty percent reserve requirement or a six-month requirement, uh, we have to put fifty percent of our uh budgeted expenditures into the reserve. And so I think right now our our reserve balance is about four point five million dollars. And so um it needs to be up to about four hundred and uh, four million seven something. And so we're able to do that in the budget as it sits right now. You're able to maintain your reserve requirement. You're able to have a surplus uh to be presented on the twentieth. And then um you're able to uh lease this or or purchase or lease this equipment through a a ten-year lease agreement.
How much did you say you're gonna put in the reserve this uh next fiscal year? Two hundred?
Hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Two hundred and fifty-seven thousand?
Yes, to be able to maintain the fifty percent or six-month reserve requirement that.
So we're at about four point five million right now in reserves. We're looking at about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars cash. Um, so really, we're just gonna go down to four point four million. We're gonna have four point four million still sitting in the bank.
Make that into a motion.
Okay, let me see if I can do this correctly. I'll make a motion to move forward with the ladder truck and the type three. And in that motion, I would like to see us pay the cash for a type three. I would also like to see that uh the reimbursements that we get from the type three go into the future payments. Yearly payments for the ladder truck. Does that make sense? Everybody getting that? Everybody knows what I'm saying? Okay.
Um, from an accounting standpoint, I can't do that again.
Right.
The revenue, the revenue has to go into a revenue account. The expense has to go on expense account. That's how it's gonna be showed in your financials. That's how it's gonna be shown in your budget. But if the council is under the the, you know, uh.
Yeah.
The the general idea that 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 money coming in is paying for that expense.
Right, so, right, we're under the idea of we're we're gonna pay it. Um, go ahead. You can go to the microphone.
You're you're on dangerous ground here with the revenue coming from these type three going on on strike teams. Yeah, we're in a drought, but suppose we have a wet, wet year next year? Or it doesn't burn, or you don't get the calls. Where's that revenue gonna come to make those payments on the truck company? That's something you have to consider and figure out. I know you're in a rush, that that's a good, that there's a deal on the truck. But you gotta think this through. You're 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 kind of in a desperation because of the time factor of getting that demo truck. There are other options to consider.
So the rev, the reimbursement is separate from the revenue coming in. So when we're paying for the yearly hundred and six thousand dollars, that's already budgeted. Now, the money that's coming in from the type three is in addition to that, two hundred thousand dollars in addition to what we've already paid in a yearly hundred and six thousand dollars a year for the truck. We're saying we're gonna pay that hundred and six thousand dollars, and whatever revenue we also bring in from the type three, we're gonna add on to that, so we pay off the truck a lot quicker. So the the money, yearly money is already gonna be budgeted.
That's that's a good deal on the price on the type three. But if you're looking to use that strike team payments as paying off the ten-year loan, you're on dangerous.
No, no, no.
Thank you.
Don, did you have a question?
I believe our public safety is the heart of our city, and if we can't support them, we're kind of in a way in a park through brush of love and supports the bodies, so does that. Um, that being said, I I personally am not in a business of all this legal stuff. Um, you know, I just look at it from a point of view of a person who does their finances. There are people who leave and have credit cards all over the place, and one of them is a bank person. So I don't, and I think it's already been brought up once that, you know, five-year plan, you know, where people are gonna do what's gonna happen. And I kind of feel like, so I mean, so we put our eggs all in one basket, and if that doesn't materialize, we're gonna be. So for me, I I prefer always looking at buying things outright and the savings of that opposed to all this long-term leasing and all this stuff going on. It doesn't belong to, it's not your asset. You've got to pay it off, and then, you know, there's always turnaround things like that, so. I mean, when it comes to public safety, if the money is there to purchase the things that they need, then that's what should happen. I don't necessarily think financing is a way to go. I also um I would like to know about grants, because if I recall correctly, I was in we bring a group in here, there's a point five groups we pay, or we're supposed to help with these grants. And I don't care much about grants, but I hear that they don't get done. And there's been kind of a few years where things are not addressed, and then we're acting for things, so.
Blazing Associates grant writers, and they have brought us in grants. We have all kinds of grants. Um, but yes, I I do believe that uh paying things off is definitely much more better than financing. I agree with you on that. Um, so uh my motion still stands. Uh, that's what I'd like to go with.
Here, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Atkinson, uh, second by Ramirez. Roll call, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Hi.
Councilman Ramirez?
Hi.
Councilman Horn?
Hi.
Mayor Ramsey?
Hi. Great, okay, we're gonna have two more.
Just for clarification for me, the the direction is to go ahead with the purchase of both vehicles.
Both vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and with the cash price on on the truck?
Yes, on the type three, correct?
On on the type three truck, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Okay, we'll go to item number six. Direction, uh, discussion, direction, and potential action items regarding the city council iPad replacement. Larry?
Um, first thing, uh, sorry Greg, your presentation, uh, everyone sitting at home, they could not see it. If something malfunctioned, I'll fix it in a post uh production. If you if you wish to, I'll uh watch it and you're in the audience. It is either, it is on the staff report, or you can watch on Monday when I uh put it on YouTube. It was very strange that you could see it here, but it was frozen back. It's. Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and put this up on the screen. Just so we have some visual references that we that we can all see. Okay, um, so I was asked to look over what kind of things that you can replace your iPads with. I believe they're probably almost ten years old, you know, eight, somewhere in that range. So of everything that was um in this report, there's only one thing there that I have not used myself and uh recommended to friends and family. I've worked on all of them. Um, the HP Spectre is the only one that I have no experience with. Um, there are uh two different uh genres of things here. There is a laptop that that uh will also function as like a tablet. And then there is like, like an actual tablet uh genre. Um, for the two and ones, there are three there that I selected. And this, this is not um like an exhaust, an exhaustive list, but these are the ones that I feel good about recommending, because like I said, I've used them. The Ideapad Flex Five, fantastic. It's a super cheap, it it's the least expensive thing there. I have three different family members that, you know, use them. Yeah, I have one at home. They are awesome. Um, the one thing about them, they they can be hard to actually get your hands on. Um, especially right now with 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 all these uh shortages. But when I wrote this, I did see that they were available in the amount that we would need to replace, you know, whatever that you guys have. So that may be a factor. The second one was the Inspiron fourteen. Uh, Pollock Works and the water plant, they both use those every day. I I recommended those for them. It seemed to fit what they wanted more. Works great. It costs a little bit of extra money. Um, is much easier to get your hands on. And then the HP Spectre, it seems to be the most expensive option. I don't know very enough uh a whole lot actually about that, but I'm sure that it would, you know, function well. Um, HPs, they tend to be pretty well-built. But between Lenovo and a Dell, those are, you know, probably, you know, the better products. I just wanted to have three things there, you know, to be uh perfectly honest. Um, so moving on, there is the iPad Pro. And I believe you, Adam, you specifically uh wanted something where you could type, right? Um, what I, well, what I did have in here is a little bit expensive for the iPad. You can just get a standard magnetic, you know, keyboard type thing. Um, but this thing's actually pretty nice. It's it's the uh, what's her name? The Magic Keyboard. It acts as like a stand, and it can kind of, you know, move and pivot. Um, the nice thing about having things like that on your tablet as as well is uh they also act as like a protector, right? So when you 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 put it away, you know, you're not risking scratching your screen, because, you know, by design, they close up. Uh, lastly, you have the Surface Pro, uh, in this case, the Surface Pro X. They're fantastic. I use one. Sean uses one. I just bought one for a friend, will uh recommended. Um, I would say it is probably the most uh powerful of the uh two, but the battery life is lower. Um, I'm sure that you could set your power options where you could, you know, sort of mitigate that, but end of the day, it's not gonna last as long. Um, I believe the iPad uh Pro with all the bells and whistles is gonna be more expensive. But pretty much on par with the. I believe the iPad, uh, Pro with all the bells and whistles is gonna be more expensive, but pretty much on par with the Surface, uh, Pro. Um, I believe, let's see. The i, uh, the iPad Pro by itself is a thousand dollars, the keyboard is three hundred. But like I said, you could opt for just like a fold out thing that, it's like a Bluetooth, it costs maybe like, you know, fifty to a hundred, I couldn't say offhand. Um, there is also a larger version of the iPad. Uh, it costs thirteen hundred. Um, I should also mention that this may not be the actual price that we pay, uh, we have an account with, uh, Verizon, and these things are, um, available. So the price that we pay would actually probably be a little bit lower. No, just, just for the iPad specifically. Um, I don't know exactly what that, you know, is. But it, it wouldn't be the full cost, you're probably looking at. A similar, you know, probably a hundred, it's like two hundred off, you know, maybe. The Surface Pro, that is the full price. Um, if you get a Surface Pro, you almost certainly want the keyboard. Uh, so at the end of the day, you're probably looking at spending, you know, thirteen, fourteen hundred on it. That being said, the best option here. Is the Ideapad, it is super inexpensive, they work really well. It costs five, uh, five hundred for it. It's small, it's light, it lasts a long time, uh, the only thing that I can think that's kind of negative is the screen brightness is a little bit low. So you probably won't be able to use it at the park, sorry guys. Yeah, that would be my recommendation, but.
What's the, the Verizon jet pack on the bottom, you said, it needs, it needs to have those for the laptops?
Yes.
Is that so we can use the wifi anywhere, or just here?
That's, so if you were at. You know, Vegas, and they didn't have, you know, like a wireless hotspot that you guys would able, you know, uh, be able to, uh, use that, so you can have, uh, the internet, no matter where you're at. It would be just a USB thing that you just plug in, there you go.
Okay, so what's the cost of that?
The device brand new is a two hundred bucks, and, you know, it's like fifty bucks a month. And once again, I believe that we'd also get a, a fairly reduced, uh, price, cause that's, you know, it's made by Verizon, so.
But, but they all, you can also use hotspots for the most part, so most of your phones, if you have hotspot capability, cause then that would kind of bring down the, the cost. Burden on the, on the LTE, but I think that was just a suggestion that the council had brought up about having that access. Just to add one thing, I think it's staff's recommendation that the council be basically have a consensus on the same device. Just because these devices will rotate, and so it's kind of like, oh, we, then, as the new council members come in, it's good to have consistency also from our IT perspective. To be able to repair the similar devices as well, so that's just staff's suggestion, I think, in terms of just finding a device that you guys all agree upon.
I suggest we go with the Ideapad, I, I bought one, I bought my first one a couple of years ago, and I haven't had one issue.
Did you get the AMD version? Yeah, did you get the, um, AMD version of it?
It's fine with me, uh, anything's better than dinosaur I got right here.
Which size are these, this window?
Eleven, I think.
Eleven, and so our screens would be bigger if we got that, it'd be.
Yeah, these are, I believe, the Ideapad is a fourteen, yeah. Yep, fourteen inch.
Yeah, I agree too, right now, my thing froze, and I was trying to present it, it wouldn't work, so it's like, I mean.
I get emails all the time, I can't don- download anything on.
Same here, it's just, it freezes and sometimes, I just, man, I get to Marissa really late because of that.
Get better internet.
Oh, I got good internet, just.
Now, on that, that Flex Pad? Uh, does it have the typing on? On the, um, screen also?
Every single device there does.
Now, can you take the screen off of the typing, the?
It actually folds back?
Oh, it does, so you don't, you could actually use it without using the?
So if you look up here on the screen, it could, it could function this, this way. Every single one of these will actually do this, um, you could stand it up like that.
Oh, okay.
Um, or you, you can actually finish the fold here and close this, and it will actually go right into the back of the screen and be completely flat. It's a little bit awkward, not as nice as having an iPad or something, but it will, uh, function essentially the same.
Okay. And then we'd probably have covers for them too.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, the Flex Pad would be, uh, the Flex Five would be okay with me too. Anybody wanna? Make a motion?
Uh, see if I can get this correct, I'll make a motion that we move forward to purchasing the Ideapad Flex. Laptop, tablet. And do we want to? Purchase the, uh, the jet packs as well?
Personally, I would say yes, because when, when I need to, um, use it, my. Whatever we're gonna call it now, the Ideapad, uh, I could be anywhere. And trying to get email, Marissa will, uh, text me and say, hey, did you get the email, I need you to check your email. And I could be at work, and who knows where, to Larry or something, and need some way to get onto the internet to check my email. Or to communicate with whatever.
Right, and purchase other jet packs, Verizon jet packs, for each, for each laptop.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion was made by Horn, seconded by Atkinson. Who, uh, buy the ideal Flex, uh, i- ideal Pad Flex Five and the Verizon Jet Pack. Um, roll call please.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
That's an aye for me.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye, thank you. Okay, we'll go to, uh, discussion and direction regarding future use of city property located at Jane Avenue and Highway thirty-three. And Alpine Highway thirty-three, Sean?
Thank you, uh, mayor and council, this is kind of a continued discussion, uh, regarding the future use of the property, uh, uh, Jane Avenue. And State Route thirty-three and Alpine. Uh, the city currently owns four hundred and seventy-seven acres at the corner of Jane and Alpine, and originally purchased, uh, which was originally purchased by the Sewer Fund. In around two thousand two, two thousand three, in order to facilitate the relocation of the city's wastewater treatment plant. The land lies adjacent to Hockalitos Creek and is in the floodplain, limiting development of the full forty, four hundred and seventy-seven acres. And in two thousand five, there were plans drawn up, environmental impact report prepared and certified, and subsequent annexation completed as part of the development process. In accordance with Government Code Section five, six, seven, four, two. Since the annexation, development has slowed, and the need to relocate the plant and unnecessarily increase rates on existing ratepayers. To pay for the new plant, um, has since basically gone away. Uh, the property is currently aligned vacant and occasionally farmed through a lease with Loveless Farms, who have been managing the land for the city. Uh, the city at its current time has no plans for future use of the property, however, the council has expressed interest in the possibility of developing the property. To accommodate future cannabis operations. Um, so staff was tasked with looking into the possibility of developing the land for something other than public facilities, which would have been the future use of the property. Uh, the property in question is a non-contiguous piece of land, six miles from the city. Uh, currently has a land use designation and zoning classification of public facilities and open space conservation, which is the land that's adjacent to the creek. Um, and according to the land use element, typically provides areas for needed public and institutional facilities. Including but not limited to city, county, and other governmental agency properties, including similar uses of post offices. Civic centers, public schools, public playgrounds, and fire stations. Um, the city attorney's office has been working with staff to ensure the selling of the property would be allowable. Um, in normal circumstances, um, a city is able to sell property for the benefit of the city. And that's according to Government Code Section thirty-seven fifty-one, however, the subject property was initially annexed. To the city pursuant to Government Code Section five, six, seven, four, two, this means the selling, the, that means that the selling of the property comes with certain restrictions. And Government Code Section five, six, seven, four, two allows for a city to annex a certain non-contiguous property if the property is in the same county. As the city is owned by the city and used for municipal purposes and is less than three hundred acres. Under Government Code Section five, four, seven, four, two E, if a property annexed to a city is sold, the property is no longer part of the city. And therefore, the land will revert back to the county jurisdiction. If the city moves forward with selling the property, it must go through the detachment process. Um, that's basically under Government Code Section five, six, seven, four, two E. This means that the property will no longer be part of the city and reverted back to the county of Fresno. The city would still own the property, it just wouldn't be in the corporate boundaries of the city, similar to that of the airport or the state hospital. The county would then have control over the use and taxes generated from the property, the city would not be able to retain any city taxes generated by cannabis cultivation. An alternate, uh, an alternate option for the city would be able to lease the property pursuant to Government Code five, six, seven, four, two F. There are some restrictions in leasing the property since it's annexed, um, it was annexed, uh. Which are listed in Government Code, uh, thirty-seven, three, eighty. Uh, pertinent terms for annexed properties include that the lease agreement cannot be over for twenty-five years. It must be used, uh, it must be used for agricultural purposes, upon which sewage, sewage or wastewater is discharged. So there would have to be some type of discharge from a public facility to be able to provide irrigation to that facility. This means that the city would, could enter into a long-term lease agreement for agricultural purposes, but for no more than twenty-five years. And the city must be discharging water on the subject property, which at this time is not expected to occur. Um, but possible revenue under fiscal impacts could be, you know, basically it could range from lease payments and possible cannabis revenue. If the city is able to lease the, from a cannabis company. Um, although staff does not have a formal recommendation, you know, based on the information provided in the report. It really doesn't seem likely that the city, that the property could be used for cannabis cultivation, it would, and Mario's here as well. Um, we've talked through it, tried to see if there's possibilities, I mean, you could sign a lease agreement. Um, I know that with the, with this Government Code section, it's very strict in terms of the purpose of the initial annexation and reverting back. And this information is being brought to the council because it's kind of come to light from discussions that we have done during the research. Um, it was something that was my, kind of at the beginning, when we started talking about this property, to see what, how we would actually reuse this property. Um, so there is, you know, it is confirmed, you know, there is a Government Code section that does state that if you decide to sell it. It's got to revert back to its original state.
Okay.
So the council, any questions or any maybe clarification from Mario, um, you know, we're, we're open to any questions or comments you guys may have.
I have a question, what if we, um, tried to, um, lease it to a solar farm, could we do that? Or would we just still have to put wastewater on it?
Uh, if you give me a second, I can look up the code, there, there's a number of uses. The agricultural one was the one that we picked out, cause we thought it was closest to what was, what the council might be looking at. But, um, if you give me a second, I'll look it up and let you know the other.
Thank you, so basically the, uh, cultivation for, uh, cannabis wouldn't, wouldn't work for us.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a little complicated, like, we, we've talked to in the past, I mean, cannabis cultivation really kind of mimics an agricultural type use. I mean, the state has recognized it as an agricultural use, it's just, it, it's. It's hard to say how it would be, whether there'd be any challenges to a rezone, because technically right now, under public facilities, it doesn't permit for agriculture. So it would have to be rezoned to agriculture, but I think there still has that caveat to the wastewater discharge. So you still have to have that type of public. Nexus to the use of the property for agriculture.
Now, could, could we actually put, uh, if we wanted to, and, and we had the, the means or somebody wanted to do it? Could we have a developer go out there and develop houses out there?
No, that would, yeah, you, you definitely wouldn't be able to do houses out there.
You couldn't do houses out there. Like a new residential area or anything?
No, I mean, eh, yeah, cause you would end up selling the property, you wouldn't lease prop, you couldn't lease property for individual sale. So that would, that would, it's something that you would have to look around the, the idea of leasing. And some, the, somebody that's willing to invest money, and it's difficult, because when you have these, even an outdoor cultivation facility with outbuildings for. Maybe drying and even trimming, which would be ancillary to an outdoor type use, probably even in the county, if the county approved, authorized the use. That, you know, you, you, at least it mimics more of an agricultural type use, but there are some caveats to that as well. Um, in terms of the ability to be able to justify.
So like if the college wanted to lease, lease it, that would still be in the same problem with the, the cannabis for them too. If they wanted to lease it to, uh, like, to put part of their farm over there, could they do it? But, or would we still have to put water out there?
Well, I think in that case, if they're looking at just the ag use, I mean, you're, you're better off, like, you'd sell it to them, and then they would just basically. Get a permit from the county under an ag zone to do it, so you, you could lease it out, I mean, if, and it. Like, right now, we've had a farmer that operated on that, on that land before, it was annexed, so it's kind of a right to farm, kind of, they just kind of moved through it. But it hasn't, I don't think they've grown anything on that land in a long time. And now with Sigma, I don't see them being able to pull even groundwater to be able to support additional ag there. If anything, someone would probably buy it just so they can leave it fallow, so they can offset the, the pumping that they're going to be doing in property somewhere else in the valley. Because they're, these landowners are looking at buying land just for, just to leave fallow, so they can offset their, uh, pumping costs. Because they're gonna be limited on pumping here in about two years. So there is some potential value to the land, I mean, the, um, my understanding is that if it does sell, it typically goes back to the, I would go back probably to the wastewater fund. Because of the fact the wastewater fund purchased it.
Would go into the general fund?
No, I think it would go into the enterprise fund, because it was originally purchased for the wastewater, and the wastewater fund, um.
And they're two different funds, so they, they go different.
Did I talk long enough, Mario?
No, I mean, I, I, it's just, it's a unique piece of property because of the way it was acquired. And, and what it was for, and so how it was originally acquired is, you know, typically, uh, property off-site, away from the city. And for usage, you know, wastewater purposes, so it's a different, uh, it's a different situation than if it was, we were doing a normal annexation. You know, right on the city boundaries, and so that's why they're saying, well, if you can't just take this island, you know, cause it's up to three hundred acres, I think. You can't just take this island and then the city owns it, and then you sell it off, um, because of, you know, the whole purpose of it is, it's probably gonna be used for wastewater. Or, or sewage, and, you know, you want it out away from the city. Um, but some of the, um, some of the things, you can use it for airport facilities, it looks like, um, some recreational uses are allowed. Um, all, all again under leases, um, so you could lease, uh, that way. There's not a, there's not a ton, um.
If the state considers cannabis agriculture. What would we need to do to lease it? Or, I mean, we're not looking at leasing the whole forest, we're looking at like twenty acres, I just. I don't want to give up on the millions of dollars of revenue we could generate from this by leasing it out to an, uh, cannabis company. I mean, what if? I guess what I'm, what I'm having a hard time understanding is, is if cannabis is considered agriculture, why can't we lease it out to them?
You can, as long as, as long as you have, obviously, I would doubt sewage would be able to go out there. Um, but the other thing is, is wastewater has to be discharged, so you, you could do it as long as somebody was willing to. Accept the discharged water, uh, I would imagine that's basically just a degree of.
Does the water just need to be discharged anywhere on that property?
I, I think the intent is for the property to be used for that, side by side with, uh, with like a need from the city.
Yeah, so it'd be like.
Also, um, I mean, they, they understand, if you're discharging, if you're discharging water with an agricultural purpose. It may not hit every single square inch, um, but it has to be able to go on the land, and then, of course, whatever you're growing has to be safe to consume.
I think that the scenario that kind of this, cause what it's trying to do is still trying to maintain some type of public use, and so what it's doing is that. You know, even in our, our case, if we would have moved the wastewater treatment plant out there, we probably wouldn't have used more than maybe twenty or thirty acres. To be able to support that, we would have had discharge into ponds, but then we'd have another three hundred acres left over, we could actually discharge that. And those, those can, those cannabis operators could purchase that, that water and use it, and I think that's really what they're saying. But even a pipeline to, to send our, our, our treated, our, our wastewater to that location, just so we can discharge onto. to that location, just so we can discharge onto a pond and then they could pull it and use that water would cost millions of dollars. I think the, the previous estimate when we originally looked at this almost ten years ago was over six, seven million dollars. So I think they're still trying to make a connection to the public use with it being allowing ag, saying that if you can discharge wastewater, then you can have, you can use this extra land for, you know, this operation. I think that's where that would work. But the issue is, is that there will be no, there'll be no public uses on that property. It's literally just essentially selling it to an operator.
Where do we discharge the water now?
It goes into ponds and then it discharges into our, our radio field, which is just adjacent and then it percolates back in. Now, the way that our current wastewater is treated, we can't, they wouldn't be able to utilize that water. Because it's only through primary distance, primary, um, treatment, which means it goes through, you know, the process and then it goes into ponds and it just, it settles out and then it goes and, and then it percolates into the ground. So it would have to go to what they call a tertiary treatment, which is a secondary treatment of the water, which that type of additional treatment could cost, is, look, we're looking at like fifteen to twenty million dollars.
We don't need to send all of it over there. Like what if we put in the lease, we're going to send a couple truckloads of it over there and they're going to pay for it. And discharge it off some end of the property somewhere.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know how sticky that would get.
Yeah, there's, there's. On this particular use, I'll read you the, the whole thing. It says, this is a government code thirty-seven, three, eighty-two. A city may lease city land used for agricultural or horticultural purposes upon which sewage or wastewater is discharged for not to exceed twenty-five years. That's the whole thing. So that's all the guidance we really get.
So theoretically, if we leased out five acres to a cannabis company for agricultural purposes, they don't have to build any buildings there, right?
They, they wouldn't have to, but I imagine they would want to. Um, if they're going to have an onsite, if they're going to be growing there, they're going to have to have somewhere where they can take all that product.
Yeah. So let's say that somebody in town who's already in business in town leases an acre out there. They decide not to build any buildings, they're just going to cut their crop and then bring it into town and do whatever it is they need to do with it. Now, let's say as part of the lease, we say, you're going to pay for a truck to go back and forth from the sewer to dump water out there. And that way we're discharging water. Theoretically speaking, could that work?
That, I, that would take approval from the state Regional Water Quality Control Board because you have to have a certain discharge permit. And I highly doubt they would allow us to put it in trucks and discharge it to an off-site location. Without any environmental or anything like that, I, I don't know if that would be something the, the state would buy off on.
I, I would say that if it was a normal farming practice, you wouldn't have to, um, it, it's very common uh, for situations like this where you're trying to use gray water to, to do kind of like a crop rotation, right? So not necessarily planting trees in every square inch and irrigating with all of that. Uh, because it's such a large area, uh, you may have an option to have somebody farm parts of it and, you know, rotate and get the water discharged. If, if they could, you know, get the right permits and everything for that. Um, and again, and again, and it being safe to do so, uh, to then consume products.
So if Loveless was using it for agricultural purposes, where, what was his water?
I don't remember the, honestly, I don't remember the last time they actually grew crops. I think all they've done is till the land for us and keep it tilled, but I don't know when the last time. They, I think they have a well adjacent to the property in previous years prior to us, even I think it was under, it was under lease. Just to, I don't, I don't even know, I remember the last time they grew on that property, to be honest.
In order for him to lease it, he had to have adhered to the water or the, the discharge water, right?
That was before my time. I, I'm not sure.
I think there's ways around, is what I'm saying. I just don't want to give up on millions and millions of dollars in revenue. There's got to be something.
What would it take to, uh, change the terms on that land?
What do you mean by change the terms?
You know, we, we, uh, when we bought it, we had certain terms we had to go by and everything. What if we, uh, wanted to re, reorganize the terms for it? You know, about the wastewater and stuff like that.
Well, that's the government code section that dictates that. That's not, that's not terms, that, that's set in government code.
Oh, okay.
About selling the property and originally annexing the property for that use.
We, I mean, we could do some more exploration as far as, you know, i- if, if the council's interested in, in exploring maybe like a farming lease type option, um, we can do some more research and see what we can dig up and what would be acceptable. Um, i- if there's any, any guidance, if it's been done before. Um, and then also maybe look into, um, what it would cost, I mean, or, or not cost, but what the requirements would be for a, a discharge permit. I mean, would they even allow trucking or does it need to be some kind of, you know, pipeline? Um, I, I, I don't know that right now.
Yeah, we can, we can continue to look at it. You know, obviously they, there is some vagueness in the way that they're, they're looking at it, but what the intent of the code is, it looks like they're, I mean, my, my, my kind of interpretation is the intent is to have some type of public use on that property in some capacity if it's going to be, continue to be used. This is the, right there, well, I guess you can go way back, the old drive-in by the CDF lot by Jane and Alpine as you're heading out to Avonel. No.
Yeah. Okay, I guess we'll just table this and get some more information and can you, can you, while you're checking, can you check on some more on the solar and stuff on that too? I know, uh, if you could.
Certainly.
Um, and because that's another option we could do, you know, in leasing and that, if, if it's possible, but I'm like him, we're, if, if it can be, if a farmer could, uh, to lease it and stuff, a cannabis should be able to do it too. So. Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, at the, at the very least, I'll bring you back a council memo and give you all of the possibilities that, that the government code lists.
Or we could use for, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for, uh, okay. Okay, um, we go number seven, we go to announcements. City manager, do you have announcements?
I have, I have none. Neither does the assistant city manager.
Okay, council members, do you have any announcements?
The police department, my car was broken issue. I mean, they're performing, investigating more.
Ended up investigating more and they, they caught the guy that broke into my car and stole my wallet. Yep.
They caught him, that's, that's good.
And within a week, week and a half. So.
Did they find anybody that hit your car that one time or hit your trailer?
No, on that one, no. But, but we were like broken into, and I guess he had broken into several cars. So, yes.
Okay, uh, any other announcements? Okay, I have one here. Um, it says, City of Kalinga, Let Freedom Ring Celebration. We're going to have a car show with food booths, drinks, arts and crafts vendors, music, games, entertainment, professional fireworks show, and more. We're going to do it on Saturday, July the third. And the event starts at three-thirty, um, at the Kalinga Sports Complex at four thirty-seven Cambridge Avenue. If you need any information to put a booth on there or anything, uh, go ahead and email, uh, Marissa and she'll give you all the, uh, information you need. She'll be gone for ten days, but, uh, you can, uh, contact her after that. Or you can contact, um, Sean and he'll, he'll, uh, give her the messages for it too. Okay. Thanks. Okay, um, you can call at nine-three-five-one-five-three-three, extension one-one-one, or email m-, info@kalinga.com. And, uh, that's all I have right now. Uh, anybody else have anything? Chiefs or captains, anybody? Okay. Okay. Yeah, we, we worked with the chamber and that's what the chambers tries to do with all the businesses and stuff. And that's how we connect. He, uh, uh, he's, he's our, he's our, um, connection to this, to the businesses and stuff. So we try to do it that way. And then, uh, um, I know Marissa reaches out all the time to everybody. Yes, she does, yeah. People would be surprised what she does. Right? Yeah, we used to have some lia- lia- liaisons, uh, with the school. And, uh, the superintendent used to come to our meetings before COVID. And, uh, a lot of times we would send people to their meetings and stuff and parks wreck also. So I think after this COVID thing gets done, I mean, we'll, we'll see a lot, a lot more of that coming back. But that's a, that's a good ideal. Okay.
Yeah, I know, I know, but, but I think, you know, when I was a board director for the parking wreck, I know, we reached out to the stadium with Marissa, she helped us out, but I don't know what's going on. I, I've been trying to get, there's people and teams out of, uh, current man, baseball teams, football, they want to come and play in Kalinga, but it just, it takes another organization to accept it. And, you know, that's, that's where we, that's where we, we, we're standing. Yeah, I agree.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, next we'll go to closed session. We have, uh, one deal, we have conference with legal counsel. Um, existing litigation, government code five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-D. Uh, one case with Fresno County Superior Court number one-seven, C-E-G, uh, C-G zero-four-two-nine-four. Uh, fifth, uh, District Court of Appeals. Uh, case number F-zero-seven-eight-zero-eight-one, Nathan Vosberg, uh, versus County of Fresno. And Nathan Vosberg, uh, was representing the city at the, at the time as the mayor. So that's why it's Nathan Vosberg. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, okay, any future agenda items?
Uh, Mayor, this is Mercedes. Um, I wanted to ask if we could announce about the spring cleanup event taking place this Saturday from six AM to one PM at the Mid Valley disposal yard.
Oh, I forgot all about that. Thank you very much for bringing that up. And basically all you need is a, a city, um, city bill.
Utility bill.
Yes, utility bill.
What day is that? Saturday?
That's this Saturday.
What time? Six, six AM?
Six AM to one PM.
Six AM to one PM.
Okay, cool.
Thank you, Mercedes.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll go back to future agenda items.
Uh, I have one and, and it's been one that's probably been in the making for quite a while. Uh, we are going to have, it looks like we're going to have a recall election coming up in November. And since we're going to have that election in November, why don't we, we've all talked about this before, why don't we have something that has a, where we make the mayor an at-large position? And we can put it on the ballot in November, since we're already going to have an election then anyway. So that's what my future agenda item is. Obviously, we wouldn't pick a mayor in November. We just put it before the voters. Do you want to go to an at-large mayor?
Okay, we'll have to bring that, be back, uh, just a future agenda item. Okay, we can talk about that when we bring it up for agenda item. Okay, thank you. Uh, anything else?
Yeah, I, I would like to look into how we could get our canine Eli, brought in and getting, um, basically on payroll. I mean, um, he, he's working pretty hard and I think it, it just, it, getting him to fundraiser to get him his stuff, to get him his training, to get him, to get him his equipment that he needs, it just, you know, while, while he's out there doing, he lately made a bust. And, um, it, it would open up a big, big gap by him going to I-five and getting utilized by the high patrol, local law enforcement. And I would like to see something done where we could get with the chief and see, and we could come up with numbers and how to get him. I know it's, I know it's, it's something, like it'll take like ten thousand dollars a year for him. Like twelve, or, you know, if I'm correct. But I would like to see him basically on payroll because he is an officer, you know, and, and, and he could do a lot of jobs and, and it's getting pretty, he's getting traffic. Pretty trafficky with, with a lot of stuff with him.
I think you're asking for it to go from, instead of it being a privately funded canine, you want it to be a publicly funded canine, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Adam. I just want to make sure I have clarification from Marissa.
Okay, any other future agenda items? Okay, with that, um, we do have a conference with legal counsel. Uh, we have one closed session. Uh, is there anything going to be a report after closed session? Okay, thank you, everybody, and have a good night. Council is over.